Being six o'clock, we're gonna start our meeting this evening. Appreciate everyone that has came to visit with us and participate in our meeting this evening. I'd like to, at this time, take the time to make sure that you all understand that you should have your cellphones turned off or muted, and would appreciate you joining me in the pledge allegiance.
Please uncover. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening to our Yankton County Commission meeting. Start out with the agenda.
No. Roll call.
Patty, roll call, please.
Ryan.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
John.
Here.
Mr. Chair, quick point of order, just like to recognize former legislator and county commissioner from Bonhomme, Ed Van Gerpen, and I don't know if I see any other dignitaries. If I miss somebody, I apologize, but welcome, Ed.
Welcome, Ed. Okay, now's the time for conflict of interest. Anyone on the board have any financial conflicts of interest?
Mr. Chair, I have a conflict I'd like the board to determine. Now, one of my relatives could possibly get a tower. I don't feel that that's gonna affect my judgment of that, but if the board would like to vote to have me off, I guess now would be the time to do that.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Do you have any direct financial interest in your uncle's property?
I do not, no. And I feel I can remain impartial.
I would, I would be the same, and I can remain partial also.
Partial or impartial?
Impartial, I guess is what the word, proper word would be, yes. Thank you.
I would note that I would be abstaining from Claims Part Two as it involves my office.
Okay?
I have no conflict of interest.
I have no conflict of interest.
Next item, approval of agenda.
I would move to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add a contract for the executive session on the last one, this last contract, and then I would second Wanda's motion for approval with that one change.
Okay. You good with that, Wanda?
I do.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Now's the time for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county, staff, or individuals, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. At this time, do we gotta wait for the canvass? We can move forward with the canvassing of the...
Wait, hold on, Ms. Rooney.
Don't we have to do the comments?
Thank you, I have Ed Van Gerpen from Avon.
It's not on. It's on. Off, on. Thank you.
I'm from Avon, I'm county commissioner in Bonhomme County. I live on the north side of Avon, and when I look out my window, I can see several wind turbines that are probably five-plus miles away. This morning, I was sitting there, I do a deal with my feet, using electricity, the furnace is running, and I was waiting for the whistle to blow. Wind turbines weren't turning. We farm several pieces, my sons own land north of Avon, and they rent land, and so I've been up there quite a bit helping with harvest. If that's our future power supply, we're in big trouble, because some days they don't turn at all, and I'm really, I got family, you know, I want them to have a good life, but it won't happen with wind power. My boys got land, like I said, and they were asked to sign an easement, and so they read the easement. A lot of people didn't, they read it, and they said it would not be a good business decision to sign an easement. They got their land tiled, they didn't want them coming through with wires where it was tiled. Two years ago, they wanted to spray their corn with fungicide. They had to get a helicopter out of O'Neal, Nebraska, because the local guy wouldn't spray with a regular fixed-wing airplane, and these are things that are happening that nobody expected, and so they're so glad they didn't sign up for this project. But what I really wanted to share here, a piece of ground came up for sale north of Avon, eighty acres, and I knew it had a wind easement on because I had a map. There's no tower on it, no wires, so I called the auctioneer and asked him if he knew it had a wind easement on it. Well, he kinda did. Well, the day of the auction, he handed out a sheet of paper telling about the taxes, a few other things, and then on the bottom, capital letters, mortgage dated 9/4/18, executed by prevailing winds park LLC to the Canadian Bank of Commerce, New York branch to secure indebtedness of three hundred and eighteen million, and then it tells where it was recorded. So I went to the courthouse, and the registrar deed showed me how to look this all up, and sure enough, there was a lot of mortgages, but what could I do about it? Soon after that, friends were in the northwest corner of the wind park there, and they said a neighbor wanted to sell his ground, and he couldn't get a clear title, and so, well, then too, I didn't know what to do, but I thought, well, I'm gonna go to District Three, they were involved a little bit, and yet showed it to Brian McGinnis, and he, he says, well, I know a girl in Minneapolis that was involved with the wind farm, I'll call her. So, a few days later, I was in the courthouse, and the registrar deed gave me this, this sheet of paper that, you'll have to excuse me, I was shaking, release of real estate mortgage. That attorney got them to release all the mortgages on that, those lands, but I copied down the names of the farmers, and there's about...
You got fifteen seconds left, Ed.
There's about seventy farmers whose land was mortgaged. Now, you can be sure, when they asked them to sign an easement, they didn't tell them their land was gonna be mortgaged. I think that was very unfair, and I don't, I didn't study this group here, their company, but I was told that...
Okay, time's up.
Okay. Will somebody else give me their time?
Got nobody else on the list.
There'll be...
I got nobody on the list.
There'll be time...
There'll be time, there'll be time later before, during the Board of Adjustment, so... You didn't sign in before the meeting, so no.
There'll be time at, when we do the...
Yep, there'll be, there'll be another public comment during the Board of Adjustment meeting. Okay, we'll move along to the canvassing of the November 5, 2024 election for Yankton County.
Just like to thank Patty and her team for another great election that you ran. Thank you, I know, at least there's, from what I heard, there was still another, one county counting the other day, and they might still be counting, and so thank you for, and your team for everything that they, they did. Appreciate it.
Assuming everything went smooth?
Very smooth, yep.
Make a motion to approve the canvas of the November 5, 2024 election.
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, seconded by Don, to approve the canvassing of the November 5, 2024 election. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you, Don, Dan, for the...
Now we have... Microphone.
Now, we have to choose.
We decide, we're gonna let Ryan choose, since he did a good job last time.
Okay, we get...
Okay. Now we have to choose for the post-audit, which vote center will be audited. We have City Hall, Fire Station, Gayville, Lesterville, Lewiston-Clarke area, and Mayfield store. Lesterville Fire Hall, and that will be on November 20th at nine o'clock in the morning.
The actual canvas?
No, it's a post-audit.
Well, I mean, the...
Yeah, the actual one.
Are they doing, they're doing all races, all races in that one? Are they picking?
There's two, only two they have. I think it's the President and then, there's another one.
Okay. So, November 20th, you'll be in Lesterville.
No, I'll be right here.
Oh, you'll be right here.
And that's, that's open to the public. I know last time we did the post-election audit, nobody showed up to watch it, so...
It'll be, I'll advertise it in the paper.
Open to the public, so...
Next item on the agenda, we are three minutes early, but I believe our presenter is here, Lisa Schultz from the AAA Collection Agency.
Welcome.
Thank you very much for having me here. A couple weeks ago, I did deliver the information packets to Patty and her staff, so all of the commissioners would have an opportunity to review the materials. This was requested after the attendance at the South Dakota County Commissioners Association Convention in Rapid City this past September. AAA Collections is a associate member of several South Dakota associations, the County Commissioners Association, the Municipal League Association, as well as the Ambulance Association, so I wanted to have the opportunity to, for you to ask any questions or voice any concerns that you may have. We already do work with the ambulance for Yankton County, so you have a little bit of an idea of our processes and procedures. So, with that, I'll give you the floor, and then I'll go from there.
Since, since you already collect for the ambulance services, is there anything else that we need to do as a, as a countywide system to, to, for you to utilize your services, or is that just, kind of, we just need to...
Well, that is a good question, and that really is up to you. We try to allow our clients to have customization that works best for you, so if you need separate reporting, separate remittance for each department, we can certainly do that. Most counties do, do the separate entities, so then you have a nice breakout of each of those, but since there is already a business associate agreement that protects all the HIPAA compliance information, and we have a collections agreement on file, we certainly can just move forward with that, but if you want to have a clean slate and start fresh with each department, as you wish, we can certainly do that, too. The rate that we have for our collection services for those three organizations that I mentioned earlier is twenty-five percent, and we are a full-service collection agency, so that means that we do pre-collections work, that is letter sending, and then we follow up with phone calls, text messages, and then we allow payment arrangements if the individuals cannot make the payment in full, but we only get paid when we collect money. So then we would take our twenty-five percent contingency fee from the amount collected and remit net to the county by the fifteenth of the following month. Now, we do have proprietary software, three software engineers that have designed, utilizing technology that really helps our clients have the information at your fingertips. We are very transparent, we want you to be able to have that information at your fingertips, so if you wanna know how is AAA doing as a, what's our recovery fees, you'll be able to access that information. Which individuals were active in any given timeframe, you can access that information. If you want to post payments that come in directly to the county, you can do that from our web portal, and so we really want you to be able to have the information and be able to share it with your constituents, so, and in regards to the information that we need, most counties have similar types of debt. Court-appointed attorney fees seems to be the number-one-dollar amount, and we, there's also... also medical billing, jail fees, poor, county poorer liens. And so we take you where you're at. If counties already have put liens on properties or individuals, we take those on a case-by-case basis. We do have two full-time attorneys, and we have five paralegals. So we have a very robust staff to be able to take care of those needs. But there have been situations where counties just don't have the staff to get to putting liens on the properties and so, or individuals. And so what we recommend is that you don't take that time and you allow us to start from the early onset of the pre-collections by sending the letters, informing the individuals that there is debt that is owed to the county, and-
You know, Lisa, one thing too, to consider is really the county's mechanism is to put a lien on real property, but what we're finding is so many people don't own property now, and so there's no ability for the county to put a lien on anything. And most of that dates back to state law from a hundred years ago. And so that's probably our biggest concern, is not putting a lien on stuff, but you're collecting from somebody who doesn't, you know, have any property.
I understand that completely. Another situation that arises a lot with counties and municipalities is what happens if somebody moves out of the area and you don't have a forwarding address? So we have invested a significant amount of money in skip tracing software that allows us to find the individual, so you can at least notify them. You may have an email address or a phone number, but people change those very quickly, and same thing with banking information. And so the other thing that we have is a very robust database. We have a lot of healthcare clients as well, whether they're small, one provider offices or the full-size enterprise health organizations that we have in the Midwest. So although we can't share that data with our client, or other clients, that aids in our collection efforts for, we have found that very successful for counties, because you might not have place of employment, you might not have a social security number, date of birth, or a cop, you might have a copy of a driver's license, but they might have moved on by then. So those tools really do allow us to be successful in our efforts. And we also find that with liens, if people do have property, you have to wait until the property is sold. Well, that could be decades. And so the AR that counties are seeing continue to rise, and then you're just stuck. And so our suggestion is that you allow us to start those early onset collection efforts. And we are very, very proud of our A-plus Better Business Bureau rating. When I started eleven years ago, my, my goal was to change the perception of collections, and so we do take a relationship-based approach. We don't credit report unless our clients want us to, and there is an addendum to the collections agreement that would need to be signed. We don't use our, the collections counselors don't use the information as such when they're talking to the consumers. We don't threaten to ruin their credit. We are working with individuals. We understand that we might be the last touch that, representing our clients, so we want it to be as positive as possible, so.
Okay.
We are located in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. We do have a satellite office in Rapid City. We are licensed in almost every state of the U.S., however, the majority of our work is in the Midwest, so. With that, any other questions?
Your twenty-five percent, is that twenty-five percent plus expenses, postage?
That, that's a good question. No. And for budgetary purposes, it's a sigh of relief, because there's no à la carte fees, there's no minimum usage requirements like some collection agencies do. You fall below a certain stipend, then your rate is going to increase. Same thing with litigation, which, by the way, we only do with our clients' written consent. We have to prove to judges that we've done our due diligence to collect in non-legal collections before we even consider escalating it to legal status. And so our attorney would represent you, represent you in court in whatever the county of which the person resides, in hopes that we would get a judgment. Now, we're not sue happy, because we do absorb all those costs. It's expensive. However, there are some individuals that just will not work with us. And we do record every single phone call, so if our clients want to hear any of the dialogue between our collections counselors and the consumers, you are certainly entitled to hear that. So, but getting back to the litigating, that allows us then, once the judge grants us the judgment, then that allows us to garnish wages, extract money from bank accounts. We do work with sheriff's departments to extract property that does not have liens on them. So, but once again, our clients are in the driver's seat. Whatever works best for you is what we will, will do for you.
Okay.
Is that twenty-five percent that you, that, so that's taken off the check that we receive?
Yes, and we typically prefer net remittance, but we understand that there is some software that counties have that it's better suited if we send you the full check along with the bill, and then you pay our twenty-five percent after that. So I do have to get approval from our VP of Operations, but that's not a big deal. So once again, that customization to whatever works best for the organization that we're working with.
Okay.
All right.
How, how would we move, move forward with that? Then would we need something from the board? Because I think it's worth exploring. I know this month alone, we have a forty thousand dollar court bill, and I know not all of that, but a, a big portion of that is probably, you know, defense of, of the poor.
I, I would estimate that the majority of that is non-collectible. That's why they have-
Yeah.
Probably non-working individuals, people who are renting.
It's, it's not collectible if we, we, we aren't trying either, so.
Yep.
It's a good point.
Well, and that comes up a lot. I mean, we aren't going to try to collect from somebody who is on SSI or has an injury or is unemployed. However, we do skip trade, we'll put that account on hold, and then we'll skip trace quarterly to see if their situation has changed. Maybe they inherited some money, maybe they inherited some property, they, maybe they got married, they got a job. Situations change. But we're not gonna exacerbate the problem if at that time it is uncollectible, but just know, it doesn't sit by the wayside and, and sit idle. We, we will periodically, like I said, quarterly, check on those individuals to see if their situation has changed. One last thing I didn't mention, there is no escalated rate for court costs if we do litigate. It's that flat twenty-five percent. So our president does not want to be viewed as we're escalating accounts to legal status so we can get a higher fee. Some collection agencies charge as much as fifty percent to litigate, so.
Will we get a list of ones that are uncollectible?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And then if you want us to cancel and return those accounts. But once again, that portal online will allow you to have access to every single consumer that is in our office. So if you have questions, there's a live chat capability for you to work with our staff. Now, that's the only option, that's Monday through Friday, seven to five-thirty. The portal is open three sixty-five, twenty-four, seven. So, but to answer your question, there would need to be, you know, I've done this before with county commissions, and you would have to get the approval, the majority. And then we, if you choose to review the paperwork again and start fresh, and then determine different categories of debt that the county has, and we would set those up as an individual account under the umbrella of Yankton County.
So can, can you send us the, the paperwork and the information, and then we can make a decision for our next meeting and, and contact you, see how we wanna actually handle it, everything, so?
Absolutely, absolutely. Is it all right if I email it to Patty?
Send it to Patty, you bet.
Yeah, I have her contact information, so. I wanna thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. On the way out, can you tell those people in the hall to be quiet? Thank you.
Wanda, you can, Wanda, you can tell them.
Well, I'm sitting here.
You want me to?
Or close the doors, one of the two.
Okay, this, next, next item on the agenda is the Missouri River Associates, Jen Gray. And I would, I would ask the people in, in hallway to be quiet so that everyone in the room can hear, and you can hear what's going on in here.
Welcome.
Hello. Did you get them all a packet, Patty, or? Okay, perfect. Well, we have a full house tonight, so I will try not to take up too awful much of your time. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. I'm Jen Gray with Missouri River Associates here in Yankton. Our office is just a block down the street here. Been doing insurance for about twenty-three years. I have Josh Gilkerson with me tonight from AccuSure. We can talk a little bit about that in a bit. So I have presented some quotes for the county's health insurance. I've watched a lot of the videos, listened to the, the meetings and the questions and the comments that were made, so I know that we've kinda been through a lot. And I know at the last meeting and this meeting, you guys are gonna have a lot of numbers and, and things thrown at you, so feel free to ask any questions. In the packet that Patty had got you is just a little presentation about, first page in is just Missouri River and AccuSure, just a little brief bit about us and what having a local agent means. So I know you've gotten a couple quotes direct from Avera and Blue Cross Blue Shield. We're just a little different. We're a local agent, we're here down the street, we can, your employees can walk in and, and talk to us, and we're available to them. So that's the first few pages. The next page is a little bit about some HR items that are available to you, potentially depending on what direction that you choose, those come through AccuSure, and if we have any questions on those, Josh can speak for that as well. And the next page is kind of the, the real items and what we're here for. So there's a little snapshot there on your current premiums, and this is all based on the information that I received to get the quotes. Current premiums, we have a well-mark option, and then we do our, we are also offering an Avera option. So a lot of these options are gonna be similar to what you've already seen with the direct quotes that they had gave you at the last meeting. There is gonna be a little bit different. So those direct quotes are the people, they'll come from Sioux Falls. The difference is gonna be the compensation to myself and my staff for being available to you, available to your employees, and that's the difference you'll see in the both of these. If we go to the next page, well, we'll skip one, there's a medical side-by-side. The first one's the forty-five hundred dollar HSA option. Blue Cross is pretty comparable, and in the ballpark it is, they are tending to trend a little bit higher, but they do have a lot of benefits to offer. And as you have seen in the quotes that you were also- As you've seen in the quote that you were given as well, the Avera rates are, are much less. They are decreased on that plan by twelve point seven percent, which is a significant amount, I know, to the county. The next page is the sixty-three fifty option. Again, rates are fairly similar with the Blue Cross Blue Shield. They are a little less with the Avera HSA option. There is a slight difference on that plan. The employees will be taking a little bit higher of an HSA deductible, so they'd be going up to the sixty-five hundred versus the Blue Cross can offer the sixty-three fifty deductible, which is very similar to what you have now. Okay? And then the last page is the comparison on the co-pay option. So again, very much similar coverage. The Blue Cross Blue Shield is a smidge cheaper than what you currently have with Medica, and then Blue Cross is quite a bit less. There is a few slight differences, and those are highlighted in the colors on the added network, out-of-pockets, and some of the co-insurance is a little bit different. All in all, two very great offers. I know that we most likely budgeted for an increase from Medica coming, that didn't happen, 'cause we're no longer gonna be there. Avera is offering, as they explained to you in your last, in the meeting previous, that they are gonna offer a first-year rate cap of no more than eight point nine percent.
That's for the renewal next year?
For the renewal, yep.
Oh, wow. Okay.
And-
How much was that, eight point?
No more than eight point nine percent is what I've been told. So they will offer that. They are offering the Great Life Fitness Membership. We have pretty much two different options here. I know there's been a lot of discussion on Avera within networks. There is some outside network there. They have a United Healthcare option that they can go file claims to if they are not local to Avera right here. It is a little bit different. The easier transition option may be the Blue Cross Blue Shield. I know employees have been very happy with that as well. If we are gonna lean towards the Avera, that's perfectly fine, but I do know, I think it's gonna take some education to the employees. It's a lot different from when you guys were there the last time. So it's gonna take some education with me, them, Patty, whomever it may be.
So, so how, how is it different then? Is it gonna be more difficult?
The networks were very different, so I think that's a lot of why they say we don't wanna go back there.
Okay, so, so how, so is it different, like providers-wise or paperwork-wise or what, I guess?
Restriction-wise.
Restriction-wise.
Provider restriction. It was a lot tighter back then, I would say. They do have a, a little bit wider network now, where-
So it's gotten better?
It's gotten better, yes, but sometimes when you get that taste in your mouth, you just have to be reeducated on it, and, and that'll take a little bit feet. So I think the easier transition, potentially the first year, will be the Blue Cross Blue Shield, if that's what you choose.
Are they offering a rate cap?
They are not, no. So the Blue Cross Blue Shield will go through the AccuSure, and that's where that hole comes in, and I'll let Josh speak a smidge about that if you would.
Sure.
Jen, do you have a, what is the co-pay for the employees that don't have the HSA?
For, like, the provider co-pay?
Yeah. 'Cause I know, I can't remember what we pay now for the ones that don't have-
Thirty-five dollars for a primary care and seventy for a specialist, and both quotes match that exactly.
I'm Josh Gilkerson with AccuSure Midwest. I'm in our peer office. We function as the general agency for Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we work with Jen, your local agent here. In addition to that, we provide some additional support. And, and just to reflect on your question, that's page eight, all three of these benefit side-by-side comparisons, they're there to illustrate, here's, here's what your current plan is with Medica. The next column with option one is showing the Blue Cross, a nice side-by-side comparison to show you, here's what your in-network, out-of-network benefits are with each plan that we're comparing. So it's a very clear illustration, and then we highlight the differences with different colors. Green is a better benefit, orange is a, a reduction of a benefit. And then, of course, all the rates and the totals down below, based on the enrollment numbers that we had at the time quoting. But some of the additional features that we bring with AccuSure, not only on the benefit side, support with the health plan or the group health plan, but we also offer a lot of HR and consulting services that are free to our agents or our clients that, that work with us. It's just a value add that we bring, and so it depends on what you're needing, what your needs are. We try to customize that, but to just keep it short, I know we're kinda crunched on time, but there's documentation, prep services that we do to keep you compliant, whether it's an FMLA, ERISA situation. We have a legal team that if you run into one of those situations where you've got a sticky employee situation that you're not sure how to handle, or you need some, some maybe legal advice, we have lawyers that specialize in those areas that we can ping and, and run things through to get you a real solid, comfortable answer, and it's, and it's in black and white writing for you. But the, oh, the doc prep services, if you're doing a summary plan description for those compliance purposes, those are a feeable service. So depending on what you need, we can, we can send a follow-up list after this. But with the HR consulting, that's also totally customizable, depending on what you need. There are services available for fee, such as employee tracking, anniversary dates, hiring, firing, annual, annual checkup-type services or- annual, annual checkup-type services, or, or job description, help. Very customizable depending on what you need. If you need, if you need anything there, we'd probably just get together with you one-on-one and kind of drill down into what you're doing now. Because I understand you're outsourcing some of those HR duties. And maybe you keep that and just take advantage of some of our preparation-type stuff.
So your HR support, that's just for healthcare-wise then?
Uh, no, so we do the benefit administration services, and the HR is very expansive. Depending if you need a system, some, some folks work on a HRIS system, which is a data management. You have employees that tracks your payroll, processes that stuff, and that's generally a fee-for-service type deal. Or if there's just HR compliance-type questions dealing with personnel, those are, those are gonna be a value-add-free service that we provide. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions before we let you go?
I have none at this time.
If you think of any after that you would like to reach out on, feel free.
Will do.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jen.
Is your number on here? Okay.
And we will probably choose, Risty Benefits is here, but we'll probably have to decide the next meeting.
Yes, yep. Next item on the agenda is Risty Benefits. They're also gonna give us information on healthcare.
Good evening.
Be careful.
Yeah. I love high heels.
The initial information provided to you, we were told just to bring numbers and then supporting materials to tonight. So I did just that. Patty gave you the initial numbers, and then now we have our supporting materials that we'll hand out and walk through. My name is Sonya Nordby with Risty Benefits. I am going to let Roger, the founder of Risty Benefits, do a quick introduction for you so you know who we are.
Just quickly, my name's Roger Risty. I've been in business for over fifty years. This is all we do is employ benefits. We don't do property and casualty, we don't do auto, we don't do homeowners. All we do is employ benefits, that being life, health, dental, vision, medical. And we like to think we do it very, very well. We are associate members of the County Commission Association. We are associate members of the Elected Officials Association. We attend all your workshops, and we attend all your county, or your annual conventions to show our sign of support for all the counties. We currently work with approximately forty-five counties in the state of South Dakota. We, there's not a courthouse we have not been in, in the state. We do a lot of work with governmental entities, and we like to think we do it very, very well. What's gonna make us different than anybody else you see or have seen is we're gonna bring you ideas and suggestions that are not only going to save you money, but gonna save you a lot of money over what anybody else is gonna bring you. And I think you're gonna be impressed with what we do, but it's gonna take a little bit of explanation. I have with us Dan Johnson over here. As Sonya said, she's, actually, I sold her the business about eight, five years ago. And so she tells me all the time, she signs my paycheck now. With that, I'll turn it over to Sonya.
Thank you, thank you, Roger. So the handout given to you, the first few pages, talks about a little bit more in-depth who we are. That's available to read at your leisure before you make your decision. I want to hit on a couple of key things. We understand in addition to cost, that service and value is very important as well. And we provide that additional layer of service as a broker. We are there to be hand-in-hand with you as a team when it comes to helping develop your benefit package and your goals and what you're trying to accomplish. We'll be there to help with claims, so employees don't have to call an eight-hundred number. We do produce benefit books for you as well. And those are invaluable to your employees. It's got all the information they need to know about their benefits. And that was another handout that I believe Dan had given you. And that's just a sample, it's gonna have everything that you are needing. We build that for free for you as a value-add. It does take over eight hours, and it includes all of your information that you would like in there, even if you want to add your retirement and anything like that as well.
Just quickly, in that book, we also, the benefit book, we also include the SBC, which is required, you are required to give your employees every year. That's in the book, and we rebuild that, and we update it every year for you.
So we try to help take some of that compliance weight off of your shoulders as well with providing that information and the COBRA information in the back of those benefit books. And you can hand those out to your employees, and they work great for hiring as well and walking through the benefits. I have a lot of employer groups that use them for hiring as well. So, all right. I'm going to go ahead and have you go to tab one, if you would please. So we're here primarily about health insurance, but we do provide the whole package. We are independent. We do cover the state of South Dakota. I know you have local, but local anymore is a webinar and a FaceTime, and, and you can see everybody across the state. We do travel, and we are here on a regular basis and available for you. Employees have my cellphones, employers have my cellphone. I get texts at seven o'clock at night, and I'm emailing them at ten o'clock and on weekends when they're in the office. So we do pride ourselves on that and, and response time. So, starting with the health insurance, because we're an independent broker, we don't represent just one. We do reach out to all carriers available. And so we wanted to let you know that we will do that every year to make sure that what you have is competitive and to be able to negotiate on your half if we can provide additional savings that way. Allied Health declined due to risk, and United Health declined because they were needing some more information that we're, that we were not able to provide them from Yankton County. So we're presenting three options today, Health Partners, Wellmark, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Avera Health Plans. Those were provided to you, they, you were given them initially prior to this presentation without the Section 105 explanation, but with the savings listed at the bottom of each plan. And so I'll walk through that. We're able to provide out-of-the-box solutions. We really try to work hard on that. And one of them is called a MERP, and that's what we're gonna walk through. We do provide this for probably twenty-five percent of the counties, I would say. So we do have references. Mead County is one of them that's been utilizing a MERP for two years. We were able to save them a lot of money. They are about your size. And as far as services as well, I'll kind of jump back and forth between that, is we took them paperless. So all of their employees enroll online now. And so I don't know if that's something you already have, if you do, great. I, we know how to utilize that and to help with that. And if not, we can help take your paperless as well. So what we are proposing is, once you choose whether you want Avera or Wellmark, that we utilize a concept called a MERP. We're able to do that with both of those carriers. Health Partners does not work with the TPA for a MERP, but they are more expensive, and you've probably already seen that, but we can show you again as well when we walk through this as it is in this presentation. The idea behind a MERP, it's called a Medical Expense Reimbursement Plan. It's allowed under Section 105 of the IRS Code. And the idea is to purchase a higher deductible health plan at a lower cost and use the premium savings to buy benefits back down to the desired plan. Okay? It's a very streamlined process. It's all electronic. Employees don't have to keep track of anything, and that's what we really like about that. So basically, in a sense, Yankton County would be partially self-funding from the higher deductible plan to the lower deductible desired plan. So it, it's gonna provide additional savings, or as Mead County likes to call it, unspent funds. And you can utilize that to offset future premiums, future increases, or provide additional benefits for employees as they usually do end up accumulating and providing an additional benefit year after year. So I'm gonna go ahead and have you turn to tab two, if you would. And this is the initial material you should have received. This is Health Partners. The total annual amount. What we did is we found very comparable plans against what you currently had for plans. And so that is open for discussion if you do want to make some changes. But we matched up as best as we could with each health plan carrier based on what you currently have now. Health Partners came in higher than Wellmark, and so therefore we are not recommending them, but did want you to show that we do do our due diligence and we do look at other carriers. So you can continue on that to the next page. This is Wellmark. I'm gonna skip over Wellmark for right now, and I want to jump straight to Avera. Avera provides the bigger savings. So go ahead and turn another page until you get to Avera, if you would please, and that's gonna be in the green. So the snapshot shows the three plan designs. I'll let you guys get caught up, so basically, I'm going too fast. These are three plan designs that match as close as we can to what you currently have. You guys have a current co-pay plan and two high deductible health plans. So based on utilizing a MERP, we can save an additional thirty-three thousand dollars than what the plans are if you just purchase them direct. With that being said, everything that Avera and Wellmark said that they would bring you as value adds, we have available with them as a broker as well. So you will get that rate cap guarantee and the value adds that have already been discussed. And I won't go through those again unless you have more questions, as they've already been talked about. But those will be brought to the table as well, depending on which carrier that you choose. So...
Sonya, one question I did have. So you work with forty other counties. Would it be possible, like, for our county to just make sure we're given competitive healthcare compared to other counties? Is that something that you could assist us with? You know, we want to make sure we're providing good benefits, not too low, not too high, but, you know, where we remain competitive?
Yeah, that's a very common question for all the counties that we work with. What are other counties offering, what is competitive? They are, your most common is going to be in the mid-range of twenty-five hundred to a three-thousand-dollar deductible. And if that is something you wanted me to bring back to the table prior to your decision-making process, I can definitely do that. But we do have that education and information to provide you. Is that what your question was?
It's always nice to see what other counties are doing and then make a decision based off of that.
Sure, yeah, I can definitely provide you some information.
Great, thank you.
So turning to the next page, the next snapshot with Avera, this is going to be what, what the MERP is. And so I'm gonna walk through this, and it's gonna have three columns, three green columns. Okay? So the third column is an eighty-three hundred dollar deductible, high deductible health plan. That is the plan we're gonna purchase from Avera. Yankton County's gonna buy that plan from Avera. It's gonna be a higher deductible but a lower premium. The first two plans are gonna be the desired plans, and this is based on what you had before. Granted, that can be changed if you want to. These are gonna be based on the plans you currently have, and those are gonna be the desired plan designs. You're gonna fund them at their current rates. So as you can see, the total cost, if you bought the sixty-five hundred and the forty-five hundred direct from Avera, is three-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand. You're going to buy the eighty-three hundred dollar plan for three-hundred-and-four thousand instead, and you're gonna have a savings difference between the two of about forty-five thousand dollars to use for any claims buy-downs if there's a claim. So how does that work? All right. So we have a TPA, a third-party administrator, and if there's a claim, the insurance carrier will send that electronically to the third-party administrator, and they coordinate with you to do the buy-down. So as a user, because that's the biggest concern, is how do my employees utilize this? So let's say I want the forty-five hundred dollar plan design, the TPA knows that. And I get into, I got hit by a bus on, on the way to work this morning, and I ended up in the hospital. My insurance card is gonna say eighty-three hundred, and the, the provider's gonna run that. Avera's gonna send that to the TPA. The TPA is gonna say, Sonya with Yankton County has the forty-five hundred dollar plan design. So she's going to coordinate, TPA's gonna coordinate with you and buy the difference in that deductible from the eighty-three hundred down to the forty-five hundred. She's gonna send me an explanation of benefits that says, Sonya, I paid your provider the difference. So that way you only owe the desired plan design, and you owe your provider forty-five hundred dollars. It's that simple. It's a ten-day turnaround in an ideal world. So the claim is submitted on a Monday to the TPA, they're processed on a Wednesday, and they're kicked out on a Friday, and everything is electronic. And then you get an explanation going, I only owe forty-five hundred dollars because that's the plan that I picked. Does that make sense? Okay, so let's go back to your funding portion. So again, you're going to fund it as if you're buying them direct, but you're gonna buy a less expensive plan and only give Avera the, the money if there is... And you're only paying for that, for that plan design. And so instead of giving Avera all three-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars, you're giving them three-hundred-and-four. You're keeping the difference if there's any claims utilization. So instead of giving it all to Avera, if you have a great claims year, they keep it all. Well, in this, in this, with this concept, they don't get to keep it all, and then you can keep what's left over to help with additional costs towards any benefits for the employees. Now, the average utilization is about twenty percent. So twenty percent of your employees are gonna hit their deductible. And that's kind of the number that we run by. The highest utilization we've ever had is twenty-five percent. And that's in my, my eight years of, of doing this. So we always base it on twenty percent utilization. So if only twenty percent of your employees hit their deductible, you're gonna have an additional twenty-two thousand left out of that forty-five thousand of unspent funds that then you can use to offset any future costs or to buy additional benefits for your employees. Okay? Does that make sense? Everybody on the same page with me? All right. So any questions on the MERP concept and how it works?
Can I step in quickly?
You sure may.
I, I want to make sure everybody's clear in what she said. The funded plan, the sixty-three fifty and the forty-five hundred dollar plan are net commissions. It's the same rate that you're gonna pay if you go direct with Avera.
And that's the other beautiful thing about the MERP concept, is you're able to have that net commission. So, as if you're going direct with Avera because of the savings that we're able to produce with that. So we were very excited to be able to bring that to you. We're gonna do the same concept with the other fifty-five hundred dollar co-pay plan. It's also MERPed as well. So you're gonna take the savings of the two plans, and you have about a thirty-three thousand dollar annual savings at the end of the year based on a twenty percent utilization. The most common question is, it sounds too good to be true, you know, does it work? Yes, it, it works very, very well. It's a proprietary calculator, so we just don't invent the numbers. They have to flow through the spreadsheet. And we've had counties, the county that's been on the MERP concept the longest is ten, ten years?
Ten years.
Ten years. And so then they're able to utilize those unspent funds. They purchased, I think, dental for their employees, and, and some people use it for a premium holiday. So any questions on that?
Do you got, do you got a savings number for Blue Cross Blue Shield also?
I do, I do. So thank you for asking that. Avera, based on the information provided, all of this, let me back up. All of this was based on your current invoice. So all things being the same, our premiums would be the same that Avera presented you if the plan designs are the same. So the savings with Avera with the MERP is about thirty percent over what you are paying, paying currently with Medica. And then Wellmark's...
Thirty, thirty percent under.
Oh, I'm sorry. Don't mean to panic and give you a heart attack after I just told you all this good news. So thirty percent savings, so thirty percent under. Wellmark's is a little bit more expensive. You've got that open network, you can go wherever you want. That is actually going to be, with utilizing the MERP, a ten percent decrease over current. So less than what you're paying now with Medica, but not as big a savings as Avera. So the question is, is do you want to focus, is your goal the network and where your employees want to go? Or is your goal your budget and your savings there? We're able to provide both with each, but obviously one is bigger than the other, so...
And you were saying that Avera has the eight percent cap for next year?
Yes, yes, everything that Avera... Oh, sorry, go ahead, finish the rest of your questions.
No, and then the, the Wellmark does not?
Wellmark does not, correct.
So what happens if the costs exceed these estimated annual savings? Just nothing?
So we get asked that question a lot, what's worst-case scenario? So worst-case scenario is, usually is, well, first of all, it's never happened. I did talk to the TPA, she's been doing this for forty years. And I asked her, have you ever had a hundred percent utilization? She hasn't even seen fifty. So basically, based on our experience, it, the highest we've seen is, is about twenty-five. So worst-case scenario, depending on how the MERP is running, you're gonna end up paying what you would've paid if you would've bought it direct in the first place. You're gonna negate those savings, so...
I do have a question.
Yeah.
And maybe I didn't, I will call Jennifer. Jennifer Gray, and ask for the... Jennifer, great, and ask for the same. For most employees, older ones like myself, pick the co-pay and not the HSA one. And we, as employees, that comes extra out of our paycheck. So, it's not really the co-pay that we, when we go to the, I'm just wondering what that amount is.
I don't know if I'm quite understanding your question. So, the co-pay, oh, like, if utilizing the MRRP, is that what you're asking?
I, I don't know.
Okay, so let's look...
I've never heard of that, but I was just asking.
So, yeah, so, the Avera co-pay, for example, on the $5,500 is going to be, and that's your only co-pay plan, the other two are high deductible health plans, is $35 for primary care physician.
See, that's not, that's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Whoever chooses the co-pay plan,
Okay.
the employee has to pay extra for that.
Sure.
The county doesn't pay up to employee, it comes out of their check.
Okay. So, the county's going to use the funded plan design, those premiums. So, for example, on Wellmark, if you look at the Wellmark MRRP, the $4,500, well, let's look at the $4,500, that's a high deductible health plan, so there isn't anything there, my apologies. But the co-pay plan for Wellmark, that one was not MRRP-able. So, that co-pay plan, if you choose Wellmark, is what you're going to pay. And it's what, you're going to pay the difference between what the county pays on the other plans and the $5,500 plan design. So, Roger, do we have those premiums? It doesn't have them broke out? So, you're talking about the single cost for the employees, so...
Yeah, they're in the box.
Okay. So, we have the quotes, and I can also email them as well, that has those four tiers. And you're going to pay that difference between what the county decides on the lesser plan and between that and the $5,500. So, I'll get that information to you, so I don't have that exact number, so. And of course, that would fluctuate depending on what you decided to fund as the premium for the employees, so...
Any other questions from the commission at this point in time? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yeah, can I squeeze in one other thing?
Certainly.
All right. So, I, since there's not enough time to go through it, we are an all-inclusive broker, so we do provide other benefits, the dental, dental vision, life, and actually Medicare supplement services. So, we did include the additional ancillary benefits in this package for you. There is substantial savings, please take a look at that. You know, we're a one-stop shop, so then you're not having to go to different brokers or log in to different portals and have to deal with that information on your own. And we're able to provide those quotes as well. And then this last one is Massa. So, this is air and ambulance, and basically, it covers, it's, people think that their insurance covers air and ambulance, and it doesn't cover what you think it would. And my mom got flown out from Martin to Rapid on a Wellmark medical plan. The flight was out of network, 89% of them are, you're not in charge of who picks you up, and they got a bill for $60,000 after their insurance. So, the other thing we're bringing to the table as a benefit that a lot of the counties have picked up since employees have came across these same unfortunate circumstances is Massa for $8 a month per employee. That provides them that security, so if they are taken in an ambulance or by air, that picks up what their insurance doesn't, so...
And it's not just the one spot. So, if you go from Yankton to Sioux Falls, and you get to Avera, Sanford, or one of the heart hospitals, and maybe it's like you need to go to Minneapolis or Mayo, it continues on. And also, with the family plan that goes up to you, if you have kids of age 26, so...
And that can be, that can be on a voluntary basis. Usually, when it happens once, people, my mom got that, and then thank goodness, because then my dad got flown out this last year. So, they were able to have that protection. And it also covers non-emergent, so if you end up in an ambulance, because you think you're having a heart attack, and the favorite story as well, it was indigestion from pizza, then, then a lot of times, your insurance won't cover it because it was non-emergent. They'll also pick up non-emergent ambulance costs. This last handout, and I apologize for the length here, is a more of a visual snapshot of how the MRRP works. It's a flow, and so you can look at that at your leisure as well. It is an example, and it helps you understand the process, so. For single rates, for Patty, back to your question, the single rate for the employee on the $5,500 co-pay plan is, it looks like $1,023. And so, it would be that less the difference of the other plan design that the county chose to cover based on what you want to pay for your employees.
That's a month?
So, that is, that is per month, yes.
The employee has to pay?
No, no.
It's total cost.
That's the total cost, so you would subtract what the county is going to pay from that cost to determine what yours is. So... Were we provided that information?
Okay.
All right, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming down and presenting this.
Not a problem.
Yep, let's take a five-minute break.
Motion for a five-minute break.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I had to return.
I know how, I know how to fly.
I want to know what yours, I want to know what yours is.
Okay, everyone take their seats. Your motion?
Motion to go back into regular session.
Second.
Okay, we're back in regular session, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Now, I move we go into Board of Adjustment.
Second.
The motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, going to Board of Adjustment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Gary?
Good evening. We have Swan Lake Wind LLC is requesting conditional use permit for a large wind energy conversion system per Article 5, Section 507 and Article 26, Section 2605. Advocants requesting to place 37 large wind towers in an egg district throughout Mayfield and Turkey Valley Townships in Yankton County. Said towers will be placed in Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 9, 11, 13, 14, 22, 23, 24, 25, 27, and 28 of Township 96 North, Range 55 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, and Sections 6, 7, 17, 20, 28, 31, 32, and 33 of Township 96 North, Range 54 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. And they're here to give a presentation to start with.
So, at this time, Next Air Energy has requested 30 minutes. I'm going to allow them to speak for 30 minutes, and then we're going to do a rebuttal of 30 minutes. And then we're going to be done discussing the issues from the public, and we will take the rest of the discussion up at the, at the commission and make a motion on, on vote on this tonight. And before anybody starts speaking, Rob, you have something to speak about. There's a, from the planning and zoning motion, there was a condition to move the CUP to the County Commission, but apply the October 3, 2024 adopted ordinance setbacks, reject the towers that don't meet setbacks and don't have waivers. So, at this time, I'd like you to explain that we do not have to follow the 2023, 24.
Okay, well, I'll say it a couple of different ways.
Yep.
So, John, regarding the planning commission, that's just a recommendation. So, that's all it is to the Board of Adjustment, so that's all that's happening. And then I know, I think Ms. Los made a comment about a case that went from the Supreme Court of South Dakota. And in there, it was, the facts were a little similar, not similar in this case, but they had to do with the request, I think, for hog confinement. And then it got sent back, and then because there was a legal description that was in place at the time, that was wrong. And then between the time of going back and sending the legal description and the time that the hog confinement was approved, the law changed in the meantime. And then what ends up happening is the Circuit Court interprets the law or takes the law and says that the law in a place at the time that the decision was applied for rather than the time the application was filed, and they were referencing a Michigan law case. And in there, they did allow for an exception. And in the exception, it says where landowner proves he has acquired a vested right in the prior zoning regulation by having made a substantial expenditure in good faith reliance. My position is, the law that was in effect at the time the application was submitted is the law that we need to follow.
Tonight.
Tonight, tonight. What was cited was a Michigan law, and that's not, that's not been adopted by the state of South Dakota as a law in the state of South Dakota. But even in the state of Michigan, they do allow the exception, like I just referenced, where it says if there's been a substantial expenditure in good faith reliance, and I would believe in this case, we would have that, that, this isn't the law in the state of South Dakota, but I'm saying if it was the law in the state of South Dakota, the exception would be applicable in this case if the state had it. This case, when you look up cases, it sits in there that it's not good precedent. And the reason is, the Supreme Court of the state of South Dakota did not address that law. All it did was make comment was, they made the mistake, all it was, was procedural error, and they sent it back and said that you had to adopt the ruling you had made prior under the old law. So, that's what it was. So, my position is, the old law at the time they made the application is in effect.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Okay, thank you, Rob. At this time, Next Era, you're on the clock for thirty minutes.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners, as you know, my name is Gokhan Andy, I'm the developer for the Swan Lake Wind Project. Tonight, I have the team of subject matter experts with me and we are all very excited to be here in front of this County Commission. My team and I will walk you through the Swan Lake Wind Project and provide you information related to the conditional use permit application you are hearing tonight. Next Era Energy Resources has been investing in the state of South Dakota since two thousand and three. We own and operate four wind energy centers in the, in the state of South Dakota. We are also working on developing additional energy projects, excuse me, including the Swan Lake Wind Project. Benefits of our energy investments in the state of South Dakota are approximately two point one million dollars in annual landowner payments, more than four point nine million dollars in annual payroll and almost two point one million dollars in annual property tax and other indirect taxes. Swan Lake Wind Project is a project that's being developed in both Turner and Yankton Counties and the whole project is up to ninety-seven turbines, sixty percent of the project is in Turner County, proposed to be in Turner County and approximately forty percent in Yankton County. The application you have in front of you today has thirty-seven wind turbines in Yankton County. It amounts to about ninety-four megawatts of energy. The turbine type we are proposing to use for the project is the GE two point eight megawatt wind turbines, which are four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine feet tall. We have been working with the Yankton County Highway Superintendent regarding the whole road since August twenty-twenty-four. Our discussions include drafting a road use agreement for the project. The Highway Superintendent Mike identified the county roads in the draft road use agreement, which includes two hundred and ninety-fourth Street. Through discussions with Mike, we understand that the county, oh, this is, sorry, the county needs help with two hundred and ninety-fourth Street and it will cost one point one million dollars to double chip seal the road. This is a road we will be using during construction of the project. We are committed to assist the county with up to one point one million dollars for the road after completion of construction of Swan Lake Wind. Swan Lake Wind is committed to meeting all of Yankton County ordinance decommissioning requirements. Firstly, all Swan Lake Wind landowner agreements ensure that project infrastructure on their land will be decommissioned. A third-party engineering firm will prepare a decommissioning plan and cost estimate and submit it to the county six months before construction. Surety for decommissioning satisfactory to the county will be secured again before start of construction. And a third-party engineering firm will update the decommissioning plan and cost every five years to ensure the county has the right level of surety. The Swan Lake, Swan Lake Wind Project will bring significant amount of taxman money. Some of the tax benefits are over two point eight million dollars in total school district property taxes considered outside of the state aid formula. Over five point, oh, over three, excuse me, over three point two million dollars in total county property taxes for Yankton County over the life of the project, these are all over, all over the life of the project and over three point six million dollars in property taxes for the townships over the life of the project. There are other benefits, including jobs created and yearly production tax, tax revenue that are in the document that was provided to the commission.
May I ask a question, please?
Yes.
So you have the breakdown, uh, for Yankton County there, but does that include the special districts such as water districts, fire districts and, and I, I assume that's grouped into Yankton County even though we won't actually get that? Cause I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that that's how it is, correct?
Yeah, uh, thank you for the question, Commissioner, I actually, we actually work with Strategic Economic Research Company and their representative are here for, expert is here and I'll let Chris answer your question.
I have, I have one really quick question too.
Yes.
What's the life of the project is, it says over the.
Thirty years.
Thirty years, okay, thank you.
Chris?
Oh, welcome.
Good evening, uh, allow me to introduce myself, provide some context on the company I work for before I get into relevant, uh, questions. Uh, so my name is Christopher Thankin, I am the Director of Economic Impact Analysis for Strategic Economic Research. We are an economic firm based out of Illinois, it was founded in twenty-ten and since then, we have provided over four hundred different analyses for renewable energy projects throughout the United States in about thirty-two to thirty-three different, uh, states, including South Dakota. Uh, so you're referencing the tax amounts going to Yankton County, so that breakout is set by state law and it's just, the way it's described is that it just goes to Yankton County, whereas after that, then it can be distributed as you would see.
Well, like it, but that's also true for your, the schools and townships, all property taxes go through the county, we collect them and then distribute it. What, I guess what I'm getting at is I know there's sub-districts such as water districts, fire districts and historic preservation that aren't on there.
Sure.
My, I would assume that they're gonna come out at the Yankton County number, making that number smaller.
So in actuality, they're.
Yeah, and, and I know that happened, cause when they did the same thing at the state two years ago, this, the state didn't even realize that, so. And, and is that, is that accurate or that you know of or?
Yeah, so.
That's just my, that's my question, thank you.
Okay.
I'd just like to point out too, look at the, the amount that the state receives versus the county. It's, you know, you could tell who's really making the, the dollars off of this, so. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and continue.
Thank you, Chris. There are many portions of the timeline that are moving together, uh, at the same time. Tonight's hearing is a significant milestone in developing Swan Lake Wind. We are trying, uh, we are tracking to construct and have Swan Lake Wind in commercial operation by year end twenty-twenty-seven. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Chris Olson.
Thank you.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening Commissioners, good to see you again. Again, my name is Dr. Chris Olson, I hold a PhD in Environmental Health Sciences. Over, I've been a consultant in environmental health, whether it's oil and gas, pipelines, refineries and the like for twenty-five years and about fifteen years ago, started working on renewable energy projects, including wind. Worked on over a hundred projects in over twenty-six states across the US from the east to the west coast and most of my time spent right here in the Midwest, I've worked on several projects in South Dakota. The, the purpose of this, uh, part of the presentation is gonna walk you through whether or not we think the project's properly designed, so we'll start with the conclusion. So I've been working with Swan Lake, as you folks have seen me for the last six months here, on and off, uh, through Planning Commission, through the ordinance review and yourselves, and I've been working with the Swan Lake Wind Design Team to make sure that this project is properly designed. And so the answer is yes, I do believe that it's properly designed to protect all of your residents and I'm gonna take you through how we got it got there. So as described with the, the ordinance itself, when you look at something like sound, your ordinance requires no more than sixty dB, um, sound limit at the property line. So at somebody's property line, your ordinance requires that we have to be sixty decibels here. Well, we've gone beyond that and the, the way the project's designed is for a forty-five, no, addition to the sixty, which we meet, we'll see. Also, we're gonna restrict ourselves to no more than forty-five decibels at non-participating homes. Your ordinance has a requirement setback of no more than thirteen hundred and twenty feet from a non-participating home. We're actually restricting to at least fifteen hundred feet during the design and in fact, the closest non-participating home is over seventeen hundred feet from a turbine. Your ordinance doesn't require shadow flicker, we've limited it to thirty hours, I'm gonna take you through where, why these things are good, good things to have as we go. So for the wind turbine sound, although the ordinance doesn't require a, a sound report to be, uh, provided to you as Commissioners or to the Planning Commission, we actually in fact did so. And that sound report was conducted by, uh, Mr. Richard Lampeter of Epsilon Associates, he's done over a hundred, um, wind turbine sound projects over the last fifteen or so years. Rich is actually here with us tonight, so if you do have any more detailed questions about how the modeling's done or how post-construction's done, Rich can answer those. But from a high level, you know, what I keep referring, you, you folks have heard me time and again during the ordinance review and everything else refer to forty-five decibels. It is the requirement at the state that you be no more than forty-five decibels for the home, but it's not, you're not alone in this in South Dakota. The last five or six projects that have been approved over the last five or six years in South Dakota use that. But if we look at the other states, comparable states, North Dakota has it in statute, New York, Miss, uh, Minnesota, Minne- uh, Wisconsin, the like. All of the states have that same forty-five decibel sound level and the reason why is we know it works. It used to be that we had a fifty decibel sound level, you know, here in South Dakota, the majority of the projects are built to a fifty decibel sound level, same as North Dakota and others, and a few years ago, as the rule makings were happening at the state level, when we looked at all the research, fifty decibels is still fine, fifty decibels is still the standard in, you know, many areas and, for example, counties in Kansas and in other states, but we decided that we'll go down to forty-five decibels, giving a little bit more reduction for, for non-participating property owners. So that's what the project was designed to do and that's what we have, we have achieved and is demonstrated in the sound report. This ensures in the twenty-year history of all the medical literature, of all the, of the projects that I've worked on, that, you know, whether you're in Australia, whether you're in Europe, whether you're in the US or in Canada, the sound, the medical literature, the reliance in the physiological literature says forty-five decibels is more than sufficient to ensure protection of good night's sleep throughout that thirty-year life of the project, as well as any of the other mental or physical health effects. In addition, and as Gokhan was saying, with some of the other things that they're committed to, um, Swan Lake Wind is committed to doing a post-construction sound monitoring. And I know at one point in the ordinance discussions, we were talking about was Gary gonna have to go out with a sound meter and buy a bunch of equipment and do this? The answer is no, and the reason why is you're protected by the PUC. I can guarantee you that all the last five projects, again, over the last couple of years, the PUC approved, they also come with conditions. They require a post-construction sound monitoring, they hire a third-party engineer, one of the best in, in the country. Guy named David Hessler's been working for them for the last number of years. He would then work with the company who's doing the, the monitoring and then he would then review and then sign off with the state. So we would provide you that, you know, Gary's welcome to attend or any of you during the event, but the state covers you off on that. So if we go, and the, the other thing I would mention, if you go below, why not go below forty-five? Why not set a target of forty or thirty-five or thirty or some of the other numbers people have thrown around? The reality is if you, if you go below forty-five, it is very challenging, if not almost impossible, to build a project. And in, and certainly in this area or any other areas, so it's that trade-off between giving a little bit lower sound level and then whereas, you know, higher sound level is still protective health, but if you go below that, you're really not gonna end up being able to build a project. We'll come back to that. In terms of shadow flicker, again, your ordinance doesn't require, uh, a shadow flicker standard. We have designed the project so that all of the homes, all the non-participating homes will have less than thirty hours of shadow flicker a year at the home and they may not even experience that much, but the reality is it's less than about point two-five percent of the sun, the daylight hours in a year, it is a low, level is low. And again, this is a universal standard right across the US that is employed, whether it's a state level, again, all the states I rhymed off you for. If you go into Kansas, if you go into other communities and other counties here in South Dakota, this is a standard that works, we're trying to keep that, that amount of shadow flicker low. Shadow flicker does not cause, one second Commissioner and then I'll, absolutely I'll stop. Uh, it, shadow flicker does not induce seizures, migraines or any other health effects, again, well-studied, some British scientists. And all the stuff I'm telling you here, folks, was in that forty-five, fifty-page document I provided you back in the ordinance with all the references. And sorry Commissioner, I do mean to cut you off.
Yeah, no, that's fine, a quick question, so thirty, thirty hours, is, is it gonna be more at one type of season than the other? Do, do you have that data?
So, so we could certainly get for you and I, I could look to Rich, I mean, I don't know if you've looked at it this time, usually what we'll see and depending on the area, you know, it will, you know, you can get it for, you know, and it's not thirty dollars all at once, usually it's maybe fifteen minutes, ten minutes, five minutes, two minutes, uh, and morning, so if I had a turbine, so if I'm, let's say I'm the turbine, this is the house and then so the sun's coming up to these and so, so it would be at, at dusk for this house where the sun would be there, you might get a few minutes. Um, you can get it, sometimes that'll be in the kind of, you know, January, February timeframe into the spring and into the fall. And so it, it does vary throughout the year, it's not gonna be concentrated all within one month.
Sure, would you have the ability to change that or if, say, that would become a problem for a particular house? To, to lessen that amount, is, is that within the ability to do that?
Yeah, and so, and that often becomes the case, so I mean, there's a couple of ways there that, that, that works. The first thing is, let's say if it's a complaint, whether it's sound or shadow flicker or something, it's not as concerned. Sometimes, you know, especially a sound, if we do get a sound complaint, it might be the gearbox is shot in the turbine, the techs just haven't been there for a while. They go out, they fix it, they rectify it, the always the first stop shop for a complaint is that the operations manager, so there, there's gonna be five to ten staff on site and they work full-time and there's an operations manager, everybody will have his number, they'll know where the building is. We encourage, you know, go out, if they wanted to come see Gary, Gary could then direct them to go out and see them, try to get that result, root, complaint resolved. If not, there's also, they can file with the PUC and there's a formal complaint process where the PUC takes care of that. On shadow flicker, we don't really see complaints very often, we used to, because we used to put turbines a thousand, you know, five turbines to the east of the, of house a thousand feet, five through the west and you'd have hundreds of hours of shadow flicker, that's why the standards then became enacted. If that was to occur, the, the ways you can rectify that, most common, it will be, you know, maybe we'll plant, you know, a hedgerow or, or, or windbreak of trees to, to break that up so it's not in direct line with your window, you can do things like buy some curtains or an awning and so you work with the affected landowner to try to bring that down. So even if it was under the thirty hours, but they weren't concerned, it is working with the companies and it's very common across, across the US to, to maybe do that if you're gonna complain. Um, on the, uh, so, so that's sound and shadow flicker, again, designed, it meets, it exceeds your ordinance, it's designed with the, all the other, you know, world-class standards in place that we have and again, forty-five decibels is on the lower end, there are again, states and still counties that, that allow you up to fifty decibels. The other component, of course, is then public safety. And this comes down to the notion of, you know, one in ten thousand blades fail a year, so you do have blades that can break. It can be during a light, an extreme lightning strike, they have lightning arrest systems in them and most lightning strikes will, you know, it'll, it'll hit the blade, go down the blade, down the turbine and grounded into the ground. If you get an extreme strike, you can't have a blade break, you can have a manufacturing defect, that's typically about one in ten thousand blades a year. The important part is that if a blade does break and does come detached from this tower, it's not the whole blade typically, but if you did have that break, it's gonna fall to the base of the tower, if you look at the tower, the, the, these fine folks have provided, it's gonna fall to the base of the tower within tip height. So there's five hundred feet tall, it's gonna fall within that five hundred feet, typically within a couple hundred feet. Any of the smaller pieces that would become detached and could be blown around, let's say, cause if it's gonna break, it's usually in a fifty-five, sixty mile an hour windstorm. Those small pieces, although they make, become detached and blowing around, that's a cleanup issue, it's not a safety issue. Um, fires are extremely rare events, okay, typically around less than ten across the seventy thousand turbines here in the US a year. Uh, they do occur though and the, the good news about the fire events is, again, they're gonna work with your local EMS and fire services. There'll be an emergency response plan put in place in advance, so we'll be training with the fire department, but they're not gonna put out a tower, an uptower fire. What you're asked to do is the fire department then come, sets a perimeter like they would if there was a grass fire or something, making sure we don't get a grass fire if the corn stocks are out. You know, if it was, you know, still in the field on a dry day, that it doesn't catch and, and spread. Ice throw again is, you know, can get some buildup on, on the blades, this doesn't happen very often, you need very specific conditions. But if you do get icing on the blades, if it is thrown off of the blades, lots of science and engineering research that we've done over the years that it typically only goes as far as the tower, the height of the tower's about five hundred feet and if that tower's to collapse, so again, if this tower here was to collapse, it's gonna collapse on itself within the tip height. That's why it's appropriate to have a setback distances to your roads, to your, to non-participating property lines, so all of that gets contained with on the property itself, then it becomes a cleanup issue and it's not a safety issue from the perspective, nobody from the public is going to be injured or hurt. There has never been a documented case here in the US or in Canada, I can't speak to any of the other countries, but in Canada, the US can tell you, nobody's ever been injured by a blade failure from the public and nobody has been injured by a fire or by ice throw or tower collapse. That's why your setbacks that you have, as well as the setbacks designed in Swan Lake, ensure that public health and safety protection. So very quickly, some of the other add-ons that we have here, um, your ordinance requires for, for, for the federal aviation system, those red lights, so you folks, I know some, sometime somewhere in South Dakota, or if you're in Nebraska, you've driven around at night and you see those red flashing lights from the towers. A couple of years ago, South Dakota, under state law, enacted a law under statute that requires all new wind facilities built in South Dakota to include aircraft detection lighting system, so what's that? So what's that? They have to apply to the FAA to say, we're gonna keep those lights off at night unless there's a low-flying aircraft that comes in at three nautical miles from the turbines, comes into the area and then leaves here. So what happens is the lights are off, we have these radar towers around the project facility looking for the, looking for aircraft. If an aircraft comes in, the lights come on, the pilots already know the towers are there because they're all in the air, nautical charts and everything else, but they come in, the lights go on, the aircraft leaves the area, the lights go off. In these systems, it was, uh, North Dakota was the first one to enact it, you guys fell pretty quickly after that. We typically see the lights are off somewhere in the, the ninety to ninety-nine percent ti- percent of the time of the year. So we're trying to keep the dark night, skies dark, obviously reduces the annoyance for the community, and I think that's a great thing. One of the other ones we've heard a couple of times over the last six months, about livestock and about hunting. So, you know, again, seventy-two thousand turbines plus across the U.S., vast majority on agricultural land. You know, you look at Texas with the leading number of turbines across the country, all on cattle ranch range, and here in South Dakota as well. There are studies, we have done the studies, that they do not affect wildlife stock. There's nothing coming from the turbines that are gonna affect cattle or, or sheep or any of the else that you're raising. And in terms of hunting, again, same thing. Like any other construction project, the deer might move out for, for a couple of weeks, months as they're, as they're constructing, and there's heavy equipment running around, they don't necessarily like the trucks. After that's gone, they're coming back in, and there's no problems with hunting. Again, these are on private land, the private landowners can continue to hunt or choose to allow people on their property to hunt. So overall, to wrap up again, to bring us back, this project is properly designed. It's in accordance with other recent projects here in South Dakota, other projects being built right across this country, that have been operating for the last twenty years. And, and I would urge you to, you know, there's no reason to, uh, to not approve this project based on public health, safety, welfare. I think your state's attorney just covered this, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this. About, you know, we certainly, the planning commission recommended employing the, the setbacks from the recent ordinance in October third. With this map, that's the project boundary, the lighter purple there is just the, the participating land. And, and basically what, what it means, any purple, lighter, dark purple, employing those setbacks or reducing the sound limits or reducing shadow flicker, that is now all unbuildable land. And we talked about this when you guys passed the ordinance. If you go a mile back for any property line, if you go to more restrictive sound, basically you cannot, we're demonstrating, all thirty-seven turbines could not be built. So with that, there's no reason to not, to do something more restrictive isn't going to give any better measure of protection of public health, safety, and welfare. If you lowered the sound limit, put in something more in shadow flicker or increased setbacks, it doesn't afford any greater protection. You know, and, and just to be candid, they're five hundred feet tall, you set them back another half mile or something, you're still gonna see them. So you're really not changing the visual aspect, you don't need to do anything, your, your residents will be safe. And with that, I'm gonna allow Professor Anderson to come up, who you also know, we'll let him go through a few slides.
Yeah, great, again, thank you Chris, and good to be here. I'm Alan Claus Anderson, I am the chair, the chair of the Pulson LA Energy Practice Group in our Kansas City office. We're about eleven hundred lawyers across the country, and I am also a professor at the University of Kansas School of Law. So one thing I'm gonna start with here is a bit of the project history. This gets lost because so much of our attention here is at the kind of the current time period, but this project began over seven years ago. In twenty, in, excuse me, November twenty-seventeen, where the first leases were signed. From that time, we, you know, there were met towers, all sorts of studies from environmental interconnection studies, eventually leading to an executed interconnection agreement with WAP and Southwest Power Pool. And that is a, those interconnection agreements are expensive, they're multifaceted, and they, they, a lot of investment to get there. But so the point here, and of course, there's a lot of other things that took place, because we focus so much at the end of the time period. This was a project that began in twenty-seventeen, so we're more than seven years into this process. And again, approximately ten million dollars have already been invested to date, again, from this time in twenty-seventeen. So the question is, why does that matter? Well, it matters because the landowners in Yankton County, who if we take a moment, the landowners are the actual applicant on a conditional use permit. We do, we are the administrative party that does it on their behalf, but they're the actual ones who've decided they wanna use their land for this use. And they've decided that, you know, their property, this is good for their land, good for the stability, all the different reasons they may wanna choose to participate. And they are the actual conditional use permit applicant. They decided they wanted to use their land for this project. With that, again, starting in twenty-seventeen, they had, there was a, an ordinance regime all the way through intelligence October, last month. And they participated and chose to participate in this, in this project, as did, of course, the company Swan Lake Wind. And they did it based on that ordinance, and of course, with a belief that there'd be stability, the goalposts wouldn't be moved at the very end of the process. And then, of course, that's good public policy, as you heard. So again, the project was also designed to those ordinances, because from seven years ago all the way through now, that was the regime. So we'll talk about this a little more, what Dr. Olson talked about. So now if we change the goalposts at the end, which may, there's gonna be a lot of encouragement to do that, to say, don't go by the ordinance that you had in place, but do something different. The problem with that is, everything was based upon that stable business environment, and, and it's really good policy to stay with that, and it is dangerous if we start going from that. Because again, about ten million dollars already invested. This application, of course, was made back in July, many months before the other one, and, you know, and had the commission moved it along and they hadn't delayed, it would have been actually concluded prior, could have been concluded prior to October of twenty-twenty-four. And so from a policy basis, and from even the legal basis, and just then we get to equity, and what's fair, retroactively applying, uh, conditions that were not part of the ordinance and that become fatal, or even trying to apply, of course, the, a different set of ordinances, is just not good policy. Certainly not following the law, and it wouldn't be equitable and fair to the people, the landowners that wanna participate, of course, in this project. Another item, you know, when we went through this, you know, exhausting process with the Planning Commission, at the end of that, the, they, they found, the findings of fact issued in that decision from the Planning Commission specifically found that the application complies with the different requirements that they looked at, so A through H were met. Of course, the CUP application, of course, was complete and deemed that from staff and moved forward, as well as the, the requirements that the Planning Commission looked at were deemed to be found to be in compliance. So to sum it up again, so the first part is the application that's been in since July meets all the conditional use permit zoning ordinance requirements. So it fully meets all the requirements of those things. In fact, as you saw, we go beyond it in many different facets. Applying new conditions from the revised ordinance that weren't in place since from twenty-seventeen until just last month would actually then impact property owners, because again, the landowners are the applicants here. And when you do that, and you can see the box up here, that's what would happen. It eliminates, it takes the property rights away from everyone who wants to participate. All those landowners who choose to use their property rights to participate in this project, it completely takes those away here at the end, after they've relied on that for more than seven years. And then, you know, retroactively applying the ordinances or end conditions, because I think there, there can often be a real, I guess, interest in adding things and changing the ball here, changing the goalposts right here at the end and saying, well, could we do something that's not in the ordinance, that, could we change the ordinance? That, as we heard from, when we went through this process, wasn't attended the commission when the new ordinances were passed. And again, that is really unfair to the landowners who wanna participate in the project. And again, as you've heard from Dr. Olson, and of course, from all the literature, there is no health, safety, or any other reason to impose conditions. It may be attractive, and it can be really enticing to do that, and that's where discipline at this body is so important. But if you do those, and that could be on shadow flicker, that can be on sound, that can be on setbacks, any of those, then preclude a project here at changing that here at the end. So I think we have to be really cautioned against doing something like that. And so, of course, we're requesting the planning commission recommend the as applied in the CUP without that setback condition, which is fatal, as you can see here. And I'll wrap up quickly and just respectfully request that this commission approve the conditional use permit as proposed in the application without the conditions that change the things right here at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? We got one minute.
We have one minute, we do, I know, and we have some questions that, that kind of, we do have people here that, of course, whether they come up and speak to you, or we just recognize that a lot of people are here that are in support of the project. These are many of the landowners or otherwise supporters, we don't wanna go past the time, so if someone maybe has a minute that did wanna speak, but just recognize that they are here.
Sure.
Are we gonna allow people to speak for and against, or?
Yeah, there'll be opponents, we'll, we'll give the opponents thirty minutes.
Yes, and this is, we, we went to reserve a little bit of time, we ended up with a little less with questions, so. Why don't we do this, why don't we recognize the fact we do have a lot of people here? You can imagine they support the stable business environment, the things we talked about, and we will, we'll keep within our time.
I do, I do have one question, actually, because you mentioned that the planning commission had delayed you, but I did, did watch those meetings, and there was a delay on your part, wasn't there? Wasn't there an issue with your filings with the state? Which surprises me that you've been working on this for seven years, but then, right at the line here, you have these weird paperwork filings that
Yeah, so, yeah, happy to talk about that, because, two parts to that. One is, what had been raised by the planning commission was that the company wasn't registered to do business in South Dakota. One is, that is not a requirement at the time of the application to do that. There are parts of the ordinance that that is a requirement, but it's specifically not a requirement in that. So it was raised, but it shouldn't have been raised as a, as a something that would prohibit it moving forward. Second, it actually was registered in the company, it just hadn't, it hadn't had the name changed, so that was taken care of. But that shouldn't have taken and delayed it, it did. It was fine, we worked through that with, with, obviously, the state's attorney from a legal perspective and also from the process. And so we, we worked through it, but that, that's what was raised.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
Yeah, could you kind of go over what your decommissioning plan is? Because I know with the old ordinance, it's different than the new one, like, how are you guys gonna? You know, because we, we have the responsibility of taking care of the county, and what we don't want to happen is the company goes bankrupt and we stick the property taxpayers with it, so explain, you know, how that's gonna happen.
Yeah, so this is a good news story from that perspective, and that's the thing about the decommission plan as we're proposing here, and would be also imposed from the, uh, from the PUC. So in this case, six months prior to construction, there'd be a decommissioning plan that includes the, uh, the cost of decommissioning. And then that surety would be put in place prior to construction. So at no point would there be a time where you don't have a security to place. So for whatever reason, we go away, there is a security in place you can draw upon and, and decommission. Additionally, to make sure that it is accurate and you stay funded as necessary, it's updated every five years to make sure that the figure meets what's necessary.
Sure, my issue with that is, we have a conditional use permit hearing tonight, and this is our one and only opportunity to really make changes. We either approve or we don't approve it. And I know it goes to the PUC after us, but I guess, you know, I'm gonna be honest, I don't know how much I trust the state on a lot of things. And it would be nice to see your, you know, a, a more detailed decommissioning plan with estimates, because, you know, I don't have that. And how much is it gonna cost to decommission this? I don't know that.
Right, and so that's why this is done by a third-party engineering firm. Of course, that need be done in proximity to go into construction, because there's so much that can change there. The good news from the county perspective is you do get to approve things at the time of both the decommissioning plan and when the surety's put in place to your satisfaction.
How, how do we do that?
That's in your ordinance, it's a requirement.
Well, I, so, really quickly. Is that, can I, is that, would you say that's accurate? Because I, from how I understand, we approve it or disapprove it. So if we disagree with the decommissioning plan, what changes, if any, can we make at that point?
No, the way it reads to me is that it's exactly what he stated.
Yeah, and I understand, like you, it's really difficult to have a decommissioning plan before, at this stage.
At this stage, correct.
But I do wanna ask you a little bit, you used the word surety. Can you describe what that surety is, how, how is that funded? How is that, how is that, how are we protected?
So you're protected in, in a couple of different ways. And again, when you think about a surety, a surety of whatever form, so bond, letter of credit, some, some places actually prefer things like a parent guarantee, but traditional two forms are bond or a letter of credit. And what that is, of course, and whether any instrument you get, it's as good as the institution that holds it. So you make sure it's a credit-worthy institution. Again, in your ordinance, the good news is it's in a form that's satisfactory to you, so it'll need to be in a credit-worthy institution. So then you have a bond or a letter of credit from an institution that's credit-worthy, so that it's secure, that that's what gives you this, the security. Additionally, it's in a, you know, you'll get a chance to look at that at times, so you'll get to say, yeah, I'm satisfied with that entity that's holding that, that, that provides the bond or letter of credit.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to opponents for thirty minutes.
Good evening, my name is Kristy Conway, you guys have seen my face, I know we're all kind of sick of this project. It's been discussed, it's been drawn out, I wanna bring a couple of points to your attention. During the planning and zoning project part, even Dr. Chris Olson said the county is allowed to put conditions on their conditional use permit that make it work for the residents of the county. So although tonight they're bullying you tonight and saying, you can't deny us because we have met all of your requirements, I also wanna point out, a few months ago, there was a project brought before you, met every single requirement that was asked. They gave you above and beyond, and you guys simply denied it because you didn't wanna lose the tax revenue for the county. So there are, you know, conditions and things that are put on things in the end. Just because a company has invested ten million dollars and years into this is not a reason to go ahead and approve it, even though a lot of people disagree with you. The other thing I wanna point out, this is an approximate scale model. Now, the July eighth conditions mean my house will be right there. Years ago, that was fine, the technology was different, the companies were different, things were done differently back then. A couple of months ago, it was discussed in depth, and this commission agreed that a safer and better setback would be at the back of the room there. And I'm asking you not to deny the CUP, not to deny Wind Energy their opportunity to come here, and not to deny the county an opportunity to take back some of the government money. What I'm asking you to do is put a condition on that protects more people and is in order with the new ordinances that were made, that you guys agreed were the best thing for the county at this time with the modern technology. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lori Sletton, Rodney and I live in the footprint of the proposed project. We are asking you to deny the Swan Lake CUP today. I commend you for your unanimous vote in favor of the updated Article twenty-six that's been in law in Yankton County for the last thirty days. This proposed CUP would allow two turbines on the main feeder line to be built in our section just over our fence lines. The main substation is slated to be in the section across the road from us. All four of the families who actually live in our section are extremely concerned about the potential harm from the turbines and the lines being sited so very close to our homes, our families, our crops, our livestock and the wildlife which live here. Large volumes of very credible evidence of harm substantiating our concerns have been heard in the recent hearings held by the Yankton County Task Force. The fact that this board voted to increase setbacks, lower allowable decibels, and create an escrow fund to ensure the complete decommissioning is proof that the county board has been informed of potential harms. In response, the county has officially recognized that the people need protections that are greater than the ones that existed in the old industrial wind ordinance. Yet Swan Lake Wind is here to coerce you into issuing a CUP under the old rigs. This company has continually shown us poor quality work. They are not, they were not licensed to do business in South Dakota when they applied for the CUP. Several of the maps in the application are labeled for the wrong sections, plus several other errors making the application confusing. My daughter and her husband have lived in their home on our section for over a year. They did not receive a letter notifying them of this meeting. The infant Swan Lake Wind LLC has shown us that they are not a company that we should trust to do business here in Yankton County. The people of this county who are in the footprint of this project have shown up and petitioned you by the hundreds, asking you to protect our way of life and deny this CUP. Less than ten entities who live in Yankton County will directly benefit from this project, and not all of them live in the footprint. A project that harms so many and benefits so few should not be allowed. Several disabled people who suffer from conditions that make them sensitive to EMFs, repetitive sounds, vibrations, and flicker light who live in the footprint area have contacted Sample Law Firm for help. They have been assured that the Americans with Disabilities Act requires our government to provide them with accommodations in the form of setbacks. The new Article twenty-six includes a decommissioning escrow fund to protect the county from the financial liability if the company fails to decommission the turbines. Approval of this CUP, CUP under the old ordinance would open the county up to legal and financial jeopardy. I trust you will make a responsible choice and deny this CUP. I trust you will make a responsible choice and deny this CUP tonight, leaving the door open for Swan Lake Wind to reapply under the current ordinance. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Steve Rockmiller. I live at 29626 442nd Avenue, Irene, which is in Mayfield Township. I've got quite a few things, I'll go quick and try to get through them. The county commission approved revised ordinance on September 3rd, 2024, requiring a one-mile setback unless waivers are obtained from non-participating landlords. The planning commission approved the CUP at their October 8th, 2024 meeting with the requirement the CUP conform to the one-mile setback per the ordinance approved September 3rd, 2024, and effective October 3rd, 24, and to reject all towers not meeting the one-mile setback that do not have the required waiver. Obviously, the map provided by the next era does not have the one-mile setback. Your attorney did talk about a case law, but there is also plenty of case law in supporting the following, the new ordinance effective October 3rd, 2024. In Van Zantin, a 1999 Supreme Court decision in related but different procedural issue, the county could rely upon the law that is in effect at the time the application is considered and decided. Furthermore, the South Coast Supreme Court case of matter of Elbrecht concluded that applicants for a wind energy facility citing permit will comply with all applicable laws and rules. South Coast Supreme Court concluded this law was a forward-looking standard. I think what your attorney, I'm not an attorney, so let me just comment some information I have. I think it relates directly to what your attorney spoke about. Now, the, the person that did get impacted by the waiver, spent a lot of money, he owned the land. He was not able to use the land was intended for by the zoning change. These people do not own the land. They can still build the towers. They've made an investment. They didn't own the land. They can build the towers if they want to. We're not stopping for million towers, we're just telling them to have a one-mile setback. The Yankton County ordinance defines a conditional use as one that would provide public health, safety, welfare, morals, order, convenience, appearance, prosperity, or general welfare. As such, it asks for the county commission to address the interests of the adjacent landowners and appropriate wage should be given to their concerns. The numerous residents that have provided oral and written concerns should provide adequate evidence to the commission and must be taken into consideration. The Western Area Power Administration, WAPA, provides federal oversight in preparation for environmental assessment under the National Environmental Policy Act. The purpose of the AA is to evaluate the environmental effects of the proposed Swan, Swan Lake Wind Farm on resorts such as wetlands, vegetation, and wildlife, and cultural and recreational resorts such as social, economic, and environmental effects. The draft report was initiated by WAPA in April of this year. I've had several conversations with WAPA representatives involved with this wind farm, and I was informed that the draft DA is overdue by several months. Once the draft copy is completed and submitted, WAPA will review and request final copies with revision being made. These final copies have to be published for the, have to be posted and published for the public to review. A representative of the next era, when questioned about the AA in previous meeting, indicated there is no time limit for extension of the AA. This is not true. The WAPA representative indicated to me there is a one-year period for submission, which appears doubtful will be met. This lack of submission EA in a timely fashion reinforces the applicant's lack of regard for the interest of Yankton County and adjacent landlords. There are many, many residents have testified on the setbacks to be established as part of the new regulation, then separately testify against the approval of application for a conditional use permit by Swan Lake Wind LLC. The residents of Mayfield and Turkey Valley Townships, while as numerous other residents of Yankton and Turner County, simply do not want towers present in Yankton County. It should be noted, the majority of landowners consenting to the placement of the tower on their property do not reside in Mayfield or Turkey Valley Township, and many not even Yankton County. The serenity, quiet enjoyment of our land is the most important thing to the non-participating residents of this county and Mayfield and Turkey Valley Townships, not the revenue that will be generated by the wind turbines. There have been two separate failures by Swan Lake LLC of property registered to do business in state, and multiple failures provide requested information to the planning commission. The applicant's been sloppy and reckless at every turn in the process of application for a CUP, and with such reckless demeanor, how can we be assured they will be good, honest stewards of the land and public infrastructure? If they struggle to submit property for the CUP, how can they manage the construction and operation of the wind farm? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike Nutley. I reside in Turkey Valley Township. I'm a supervisor on the Turkey Valley Township Board, and I'm directly affected by this because I am in the 2,640 feet range of two proposed towers. There's many people here that are not in favor of these, and not very many I'm seeing in blue that are in favor. So I've been asked to read this pertaining to our commissioners, and I really hope if you adopt this, that you go with the new setback rules. But I was asked to read this, and it says, "Conflicts in voting procedures can be another problematic area. This applies specifically to county commissioners and board members, and generally says that they should abstain from a vote on issues on which they would profit or enhance a relationship." A lot of people are wondering about this conflict of interest. It is, it is a huge, huge topic with us out there. And this is gonna affect a lot of people, and we're asking you to really consider using the new setbacks, because, I don't know what his name is, you sir, this, this has been in good faith agreements, it's been going on for 10 years, whatever. Things change. They do change. We see that every day. We saw it this week, actually. Things change. So what happened 10 years ago does not necessarily affect what's going on today. Thank you very much.
I'll make it brief. This body is...
Name, please.
Terry Clark. Thank you. This body, as well as the Planning and Zoning Board and the Wind Development Task Force, have received, have recognized that the previous regulations did not provide adequate protections for the people living near, living nearby these developments, nor the general public. Your legal counsel has advised you that you may not be legally bound to apply the updated setbacks, but I believe that you have a moral as well as a practical obligation to your citizens who have petitioned you repeatedly for reasonable protections from these industrial wind developments. And I believe they in turn have a reasonable expectation that you, their elected representatives, would make balanced decisions that do not favor commercial interests over those of the people that will be living in that area and affected directly by them. And one last thing, they made mention of expecting a stable business environment. There is no such thing. Anybody who's ever tried to run a business knows that. I urge you to either deny this permit and have them reapply under the new rules, or to apply the updated setbacks, which this board and the others have recognized as safe for the people. Thank you.
On September 2nd, the Yankton County Commission, which includes all of you here sitting as the Board of Adjustment unanimously, approved the changes to Article 26, Yankton County Wind Ordinance. Your vote resoundingly said that these new rules and standards are what are best and right for the people of Yankton County. Do you truly believe in your vote on September 2nd? If so, tonight, you now have the opportunity to put an exclamation point on that September 2nd vote, and reassure all of us in this room and in the hallway, hopefully you went out there during the break to see how many people are out there, that you truly and completely stand by your vote. You can implement these new wind standards with the, with this CUP for Swan Lake by placing conditions on their permit, which would include at least the one-mile setback from the property line. There's been much said about how Swan Lake is grandfathered in under the old ordinance. Whether that's legitimate or not is a mute point, because tonight, you are able to put whatever conditions you wish on this CUP. Out of our Bible that I received, it says, "The Board of Adjustment, quote, 'Grant conditional uses with such conditions and safeguards as are appropriate,' and, quote, 'The granting of the conditional use will not adversely affect the public interest.'" I want to say, "appropriate." We know that the old ordinance, what they keep telling us, you know, "We're following your ordinance." Why did we have the task force? Because we knew that our old ordinance was inadequate for today's technology. Very inadequate. That's why we went through the task force. Okay? And the other thing, I just got done with the general election. I was in Utica. I was in Leesterville. I was in Irene. I was at the Mayfield store at 6:30 in the morning talking to gentlemen. Okay? I was in Valen. I was in Gayville, 7 o'clock, talking to people at the coffee place, flatliners. Guess what they all said? Because they knew that I had been on this wind task force and on the planning and zoning. They do not want wind. Over and over, that's what I heard. They do not want wind. The other thing I want to say to you is this. This is your legacy. You five sitting here, this is your legacy. And this is a legacy not like the confinements, because confinements, you can't see until you get about, what, you know, a mile, half a mile away. This is a legacy that we are going to see for miles. What do you want your legacy to be? So I'm gonna finish with this. Do you truly believe in your decision on September 2nd? If, if so, show us tonight by your decision. Thanks.
This is the anti-portion of the...
I want to comment, there was a gentleman from Turkey Ridge who was a commissioner there.
This is, this is just for opponents.
This is not, this is not...
I'm not saying...
This is not your time.
What, what I'm saying, he said something about everything changing. And it is a changing...
Still not your time.
Thank you.
Julie Alk, Representative for District 18, and it's kind of hard to follow after Lauren Nelson. But I did want to point out to an area inside of the Swan Lake easements that were given to landowners in reference to something that myself and Commissioner Ryan Heiney were visiting about, of the sound and the effects of those noise, noises and sound. And right inside of their easement, they are basically stating that the easement holder has no recourse. Effects in easement. Owner grants to grantee a non-exclusive easement for visual, view, light, flicker, sound, noise, shadow, vibration, air, turbulence, wake, and any other effects attributable, attributable to the wind power facility located on the property or adjacent properties over and across the property. It also, in 8.13, says noise and flicker. Grantee shall have the right in connection with the construction, use, and operation of the project to emit, to, or cause the emission of noise, vibration, air, turbulence, wake, electromagnetic and frequency interference, to permit wind turbulence, to allow and permit wind turbulence to overhang cast shadows, cause flicker, or shadow onto the property and adjacent properties, and to impact owner's views and from the property and similar field effects. Owner, for itself and on behalf of its successors and assigns hereby affects, accepts such effects and waves any right to object to such effects and hereby releases grantee from any claims, damages, liabilities, or losses owner may incur therefrom. So if they have an adjacent piece of property owned by someone else, and there is an issue with flicker, or there is an issue with noise, or sound, or electromagnetic, right here, electromagnetic frequency interference, that landowner could be liable. I just want you to be aware that that is right in their easement that are signed off by landowners. And I'm gonna give this to you, Ryan, since you and I talked about it.
Hi, my name is Mark Murphy. I sent you an email earlier, and I'll kind of give you my background real quick. I'll tell you right now, I'm an outsider. My wife's an outsider. We moved from Colorado to South Dakota. The reason why we moved from Colorado to South Dakota was to get away from this stuff. And I'll give you a little bit of my background. I worked at EPA, worked in the Region 8 laboratory for 30 years. So I got a perspective on science, a pretty good perspective on physical sciences, then. What you guys are deciding on is a philosophy, is, do you need wind energy to save the world or not? And what I've seen in my career at EPA, I was involved with fracking. Fracking was a big deal. We did a ton of analysis for fracking at their EPA Region 8 lab. We did pretty much all the samples in the nation. And you know what we found? Nothing. And then you know what happened with that project? It went away. So I saw signs all over the place in Colorado, "We believe, we believe in the science." Well, there I was as a scientist, and we found nothing for fracking. And then what happened to fracking? They shut it down. Was it because of the science or the philosophy? I also worked on a project for PFAS. These are forever chemicals. Ran thousands of samples, never found any. EPA continues to dump hundreds of thousands of dollars into PFAS analysis, and continually it found nothing, nothing, nothing. Again, because there's a philosophy. You start creating a fear. And instead, the science is telling you something different. And so that was kind of my experience was with that data. And so, again, that's what you're, you guys are gonna decide is, what philosophy are you gonna go with? Do you believe the world is gonna come to an end if you don't go green? Or do we need more reliable sources of energy besides wind? And the health and all the other things, we would not have moved here if we knew the wind farm was coming. It's a blight, it, it's a horrible sight, the energy is not reliable. You talked about Texas being at the forefront of this stuff. Well, now, they have problems with energy because of wind. They don't have a reliable energy source. They can't keep up with that stuff. So, and also, I just kind of want to announce, we bought Roger Hanson's place, and I would love to meet any of you guys. So if anybody wanted to stop by our place, we'd love to meet you. But we are totally against this. And like I said, we're against the philosophy of it, the science doesn't back it up. But you either gotta believe that the world's coming to an end, or things are just fine, and they need to stay as is. So thank you.
My husband and I are landowners in Yankton County. I'll make this very brief. I don't have a doctorate in science or whatever, or whatever. And I do agree with you that I do not believe that flicker or sound or whatever are gonna cause some of the things that have been mentioned. But I do know from experience that if you have a seizure disorder, that those things can trigger a seizure. If you have migraine headaches, they will trigger a migraine. Thank you.
And there's a couple of things on the table here. First of all, I'm gonna ask if we can shut that off. That is actually psychological warfare that you guys, oh, don't even. As a psychotherapist, this is how things work like that. Is it okay if I shut the computer?
Do you want to do something?
Thank you. The other part of this... The other part of this is, you have heard a lot from... I'm sorry? I, you guys have heard a lot of research done, presented by the wind company. And they keep saying independent or third party. I'm sorry, they say third party. They are not saying independent third-party researchers. There is a significant difference, and that has to be paid attention to. Multiple times when they talked about the research, they said, "We did the research." Guess what? They're telling the truth on that one. That is their research, done by companies that they are either in bed with or own. Understand the difference between research done by an independent third-party. The other part of it, they talked about landowner rights. Here's the thing. There's a lot of things that we have invested a lot of our time, money, and effort in for seven years. To be honest with you, I have invested 48 years in my health. And I am not willing to give that up for somebody else wanting money in the bank. We can work hard and we can get money in the bank. We don't always have to find a shortcut to do so. This is one of those shortcuts that has long-term, lifelong impacts on your county, your residents. The people who elected you are counting on you to hear them. Look at the room. Think about the hundreds of emails, petitions, neighbors, friends, who have come to you and said, "We do not want this. We value our health." Know the research that's presented to you, and understand that the research for the health effects that have been proven across the world, it is out there. And I provide it to all of you, 179-page document on those health effects. Independent, third-party research. It's there. You cannot ignore that. I am asking you that you either deny the CUP. They can come back if they would like to follow all of the new ordinances. Or you do approve the CUP under the new ordinances, which you unanimously said was good for this county. That is your right. That is your obligation. And we cannot make decisions based on fear. And that is a tactic that is used by high-powered suits. And we know that across the world. You know that every day. So I plead with you to do what is right for your constituents. Thank you.
We've got two minutes.
Two minutes. Two minutes left. Anybody? Let's go. Mike, you're not going to make it.
Mike Healy, Yankton County. I am going to make this, as a number of indicators, go to rebrief. One of the comments that was made early on, and I think it was referred to in a case, an amount of money that was invested in the project. So, and there were like $10 million that's been invested in this project. Now, this is a $400 million project. Let's put that in perspective. That's 2.5%. Now, I've been involved over the years in many larger projects, and a 2.5% investment in a project that may not work out, or you had to start over, is not that unusual. So to use a large number, and 10 million, which is a lot, but at the same time, this is a $400 million project. Another thing to note too is that when we're talking about 37 turbines, that's on 20 owners of the property. And of those 20, 12 live out of the area. They do not live in Yankton County. And when it comes down to the balance of them, there's three. Three of the landowners that would have turbines on land adjacent to their property. I may have a property. I may have a turbine, but it's going to be two miles away, four miles away, or something like that. So we're getting down to three, three landowners that we would actually looking at, that would actually have turbines in the area. So what is that saying? Really? The sound is that a large number want them, but I really question that to the degree, that few. Then lastly, is that in the paper, there were notices about the impact per year. Okay. $1 million per year. And a reference was made to over 30 years. It would bring in 30-some million dollars. That may be true. But how much of it is really going to come back to the county? And when you go through the mechanics, and a financial projection was presented to each of the county commissioners here, it's less than $123,000 per year. Now, that's in today's dollars. Now, if we're looking ahead five years now, we've got the value of money. Plus, we also have the inflation impact. And likewise, that does not include roads and bridges. Now, a reference was made that a road will be built or constructed or redone up to $1 million. But what about bridges and others that'll be carried out in the future years? So I'm just trying to bring together a few of the facts that I think are really significant if we're really looking at it as a financial investment for the future. And that's not considering the impact of our residents of the county. So thank you for giving me a couple of minutes.
Okay. So at this time, does next era have five minutes for a rebuttal to what they've heard these constituents speak about?
Can we take two minutes just to...
Two minutes?
Just to caucus here?
You bet. Yep.
Take a two-minute break, perhaps a five-minute break, Mr. Chair?
We need a five-minute break?
Ooh, we have a five-minute break.
Second.
Got a motion, second, have a five-minute break. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side?
Can we do that, Don?
Don. Don.
Just Don and Wanda, just the...
We gave them 30 minutes. And we gave them...
We should, because we told them, anti's got 30 minutes. The public needs...
So...
They're part of the public too, so...
Proponents.
They're proponents. Yeah.
So we don't have to listen. Okay. So the five of, the blue t-shirts.
The blue t-shirts. Oh, yes. We got to be fair about this.
All right. Okay.
Maybe we should invite the employees here to speak on how they prefer the...
Because we had most, we had most of them there. We had 143.
You don't know, we better, and it's too, it's too many surveys.
They don't want to, they don't want to have their name in there.
Anonymous, anonymous.
But will it come back with an email address?
No. If it's a weapon, they get one life, they get one chance to enter into a report. It's done. No...
Well, see, that sounds like a good idea, because I've had over 10 people tell me, "We have paid more money on premiums just to keep home." But the well-marked people that were here before, do they have this merc thing? Because that merc thing is intriguing to me.
Well, I did. They had that work thing.
Well, these people, they have to be...
Always a program that has to be administered, so I don't think it matters. I was going to say, it's George the Rod shirt. So they just sugging.
Hi, bosses.
Hello.
Poor Dave, he's doing, he's covering this from remote, and his like man is like... And like, well, you know, he's barely, he hasn't even recovered from elections for some coverage. And like, I go, hey, it is what it is.
That's what he signed up for.
It's a long time ago. Yeah. Yeah. No, it's, but I...
So, so tell...
Some good sound bites that came out of...
Wanda, are you ready to turn these things on yet?
No, but I'm ready to turn this off and raise the screen. Why not? I think we're done with, I think we're done with all of the power points.
We don't forget more than that.
No, we don't.
We... Hopefully not.
What do we have coming?
Hopefully not.
Oh, God. Cat, that's just the first reading. We're not going to do the whole thing. Oh, my God. All right. Let me ask you this. There is like a lawn the size of this room at the safety center. A lawn the size of this room here. Why do we need to sublet it out to other people?
Are you not...
You get that dirt taken care of? No. People's got a fan on it.
Somebody's going to slip it off. You get them off and tell them, chew them out of there. Oh, that.
Dan wants to sublet it out because your people are too busy and don't want to do it. Have you seen the size of the lawns?
I've seen this one, I've seen one at the safety center.
And the, and the only other one, the only one at the...
I thought you meant inside, the, the lawn.
No, but I mean, it's roughly the size.
You're right. Well...
And he thinks that we need to buy a zero-turn big-ass mower. I'm like, why do we need this? What?
Well, the, the zero-turn mower, where would we use it?
Well, he's, that's his, that's his excuse. This is cheaper than a zero-turn mower. Does the county not have a mower? Like a little push mower?
We do. Yeah. We're using it on this yard today.
So what is...
And we have a rider too. But we need a rider of this kind of mowers. It makes sense.
Yeah. Well, he wants, he's using, we should buy a zero-turn big-ass mower. This will be cheaper. I don't think we need it.
Right now, I'm focused more on making sure I'm ready for the, when the white stuff flies and stuff like that.
Well, yeah.
I mean, to me...
Can everyone take their seats, please?
Well, not, not... Oh, okay. Move to go back into regular session.
Got a motion to go back into regular session?
Second.
Motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, to go back into regular session. So at this, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So first of all, we're going to give the opponents in the audience some time to get up to the podium and speak also. The proponents in the audience to get up and speak if you wish. Now, Mr. Markwart, you can speak if you wish.
I guess to point out, Ralph Markwart's my name. It seems like I don't have to announce that. But I just wanted to say that the world is changing. And the only thing that's constant is change. And we talk about these, these towers, and they don't, some people don't like them. We ran RAA lines through the countryside, and I've been watching some of the RAA lines that run through the countryside. I don't like the way they look, but it's kind of part of our system because it helps us get where we're at today. I'm not here to say plus or minus, but what I'm saying is, we got a changing society, and you commissioners need to understand that what we did 10 years ago, we can't do today. But at the same time, we still got to be moving positively forward. And for that, I thank you guys for the work you do. And the gentleman from Turkey Ridge Township who said it's a changing world, he really did mean it was a changing world. But that means we've got to change with it. Thank you for your time.
Any other proponents?
Yes, thank you. Eugene Horns, here in Yankton, South Dakota 301 Northern. I was invited to be on the Yankton County Wind Power Task Force because I had had some experience with two developments over in the Trippin Ave on South Dakota area. And there were two developments. First was Beethoven. And I had an opportunity to get involved and be a stockholder of them, but I didn't know enough about it, so I didn't. But then I watched the development of Beethoven and the professionalism and the care, both by the local group. One of those was my older brother Ronnie, who was the president of the organization, both organizations. Anyway, I watched the first one take place, and I was extraordinarily impressed with the caution and the care that went into the planning and development and the regulations. And I read the regulations. I saw what they did. I visited several times. I visited with the people that were the originators of it. And then S-Power that was involved in helping them develop it. And the point is, they were extraordinarily cognizant of all factors that were involved. The landowners, the wildlife, the ecology, the roads, the everything. And I was impressed enough where when the next development came along, which was prevailing winds, I definitely got involved and followed that through and saw more of the same. And I'm still involved with it because of knowing people that live in the area. And this is another really big factor. The landowners adjacent to the property and those that have property with towers on them. They're well taken care of. They're satisfied with the situation. They don't have complaints. And they have a lot of positivity about it and a lot of good benefits they feel. And then the opportunity, pardon? Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Can I get the audience to not interrupt while the gentleman is speaking?
Thank you. Anyway, because of that, a friend who had been asked to serve on the Yankton County Wind Power Task Force, asked me if I would do it because he knew I had some experience. Well, I did a little experience, and I was glad to participate, very enthusiastically, because I believed in it. I got a couple of degrees in biology. I've been a teacher. I've been in business. And I just mentioned this as a background. I was in education for 10 years. I got a couple of degrees in biology, excuse me. And wound up spending 34 years working for major corporations here in town, both in sales and in procurement. And came to appreciate business with that, in combination with, anyway. So then I was on the Yankton County Wind Power Task Force. And I must say one thing about this situation. I was rather disappointed with our task force because I discovered after starting the task force that there really hadn't been any required qualifications or vetting. And it turned out that majority, and I say this, it's hard to say this, that'll mean it's insulting to anyone, but apparently, most of the people that served on the task force were signed up, volunteered, because they didn't like wind power and had a terrible prejudice about it. And I know there have been changes in this area and the way of thinking with knowledge that's been acquired. So I'm not sure where we all are on this today, but I know that the way it was after the three months I spent on the task force. And the point is, the regulations that were put in place by the task force, including the long setback, basically were prohibitive for practicality of setting up a wind farm. And that's, sounds like a problem for the people that want to set up the wind farm. It's also a problem for the landowners who want to have towers on their property because it's impossible. It's basically prohibitive. And that was apparently the goal. And that, that was apparently the goal, in my opinion, of the task force. And that's, that's really regretful, it's not right. And the, uh, what is our setback now? One mile, two miles?
One mile.
One mile?
One mile.
Okay, but that, that means that if we have a wind tower in order for, and it, that's the distance from, uh, non-participating individuals, that means you have to have four square miles. That's a lot of acres to have one wind tower. And it's prohibitive. So, basically, I think that the conclusions that were reached in this Article twenty-six are unrealistic. And, well, I just want to say, I hope we can somehow reach something here in the way of a better reality relative to wind power. Because this, it's a good thing for Yankton County, uh, it's a good thing for our energy, it's a good thing for the landowners, like a lot of others. Uh, there's a lot of positives and I'll let other people expound on that. I don't have my list and I take your better of mine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger Holfer, I live in Centerville, own property in Yankton and Turner County. We've been waiting for these windmills for over forty years. This is nothing new. This is the third company that's come in and proposed this. Uh, the zoning setbacks are ridiculous and I don't know why it was such a push, the state already decided this. And now Yankton County changed it because a bunch of people are coming in here and crying and a bunch of bad facts. And if anyone you want to argue them individually, I'll argue with you individually. But bad facts, they intimidated the zoning board, they come in here and try to intimidate the county commissioners, and they made a compromise with a one mile setback just to shut a bunch of people up. It wasn't a good plan, but that's the way they did, make people happy. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Doug Marcourt. Hey.
Wait a minute.
Hold on, Doug.
Wait a minute, the officers could take them outside. Both of them.
Yes, both of you.
Folks, I don't need, I, I don't need to say much here, but thank you all for putting your time into this. I look in the audience here and in Yankton, and there's obviously two different sides to every story. I've sat in church meetings and softball games and everything else. And, uh, the bottom line is, I don't agree with everything that happens in our, in our town or in my life for that matter. But you know what, life continues to go on. We are all citizens of Yankton or of the area, right? We have to figure out a way if our side, our proposed, uh, the side we don't, the side we want to win or the side we want or looking for is, does not get their way here, that we're all still residents of Yankton County. I mean, I know a lot of people out there. And the, the folks that, some, some of the language here and, uh, it's, it's, it's not, it's not good, it's not healthy for anybody. And we have to figure out a way to rise above this as Yankton County, one of the best counties in the state, and figure out a way to make things happen. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do they have any time left?
Yep, there's plenty of time.
Well, I only have three minutes of comments, so.
That's fine, you got three minutes.
So, Nancy Winandy, CEO of Yankton Thrive, and I am speaking with the support of the Yankton Thrive Board of Directors. And I just want to share some general comments on economic development. I want to clarify, I do not consider myself an expert on this topic, but based upon education and experience, I probably do know more than the average person on this topic. And I want to recognize as I'm speaking to all of you, I am preaching to the proverbial choir. You understand about economic development as elected officials, but it's a good reminder to hear some of the things I want to share with you today. And it's also good for the general public to get a better understanding of how economic development works and how projects come together. So I'm gonna start by laying some basic foundation of, I think, things that we can all agree on. That Yankton County wants more economic development projects to increase the tax base. People might disagree what those types of projects are, but it's fair to say we all want to grow the tax base. Yankton County wants additional revenue to complete more projects that will benefit the residents of Yankton County. And thirdly, can we agree that the statement regarding collaboration usually provides better results than if we're trying to do something independently? So if we can agree on those three statements, what really is holding Yankton County back in regards to economic growth? One of those things is lack of natural gas in the county. If we want significant development out at Napa Junction, projections have a private natural gas line to be installed from I twenty-nine over to Napa at approximately fifty million dollars. This would serve a lot of communities, provide a lot of good, but private property rights would come into play on this project without a doubt. There's also challenges with rural water. It would be lack of capacity or the hesitation to provide access to that capacity that does create developmental challenges. Another thing holding back Yankton County is our reputation for being the county of no. I have heard that for so many years and I thought it was a reputation that we could overcome. But unfortunately, what I hear from others around the state, the perception has really become a reality. Also, something that holds back Yankton County is the ease of doing business in Yankton County. It will prohibit economic development. When I talk to site selectors, it is clear that they want to build in locations that have a consistent streamlined process. Efficiency matters, clear expectations matter, and changing rules in the middle of a project is unacceptable. Creating excessive barriers has real consequences when it comes to economic development. I did a quick search on Chat G P T today to get some responses that any developer might find if they're researching Yankton County. And some of the reasons of why not to develop here were quite astounding. And it's unfortunate that that's what comes up when people search Yankton County. So, uh, unfortunately, it sometimes seems like Yankton County eliminates itself from economic development projects. It's difficult, if you watch the planning and zoning meetings and sometimes county commission meetings, and look at it from an outsider who doesn't know the details and you just see some of the behaviors, some of which we've seen here today. It really turns off site selectors who want to do work in Yankton County, they turn away and don't come back. Every issue, as we all agree, has two sides and it is your responsibility and obligation to put your personal feelings aside, not consider what votes you might lose in the next election, and not legislate on behalf of individuals. You have twenty-two thousand residents that you are responsible for here in Yankton County. You have been elected to make the easy decisions and the hard decisions. And we all agree that we want Yankton County to prosper and we all view that in a little bit different light. So we ask you to be visionary, thoughtful, open-minded to new ideas and committed to making decisions that are best for the county. There's a lot of work that needs to be done and it's crucial that we as community members find a way to work together for growth and prosperity. If we want to generate more revenue without continually increasing property taxes, it is prudent to explore other opportunities that come knocking and lay out the welcome mat when new investment, uh, puts itself before Yankton County. A business-friendly community is made through actions and not words. I thank you for your leadership.
Mr. Chair, um, I'd just like to say, you know, I don't appreciate the comments of the county of no. I don't hear that anywhere else. And so I guess I don't appreciate those comments.
Okay, so you have five minutes for rebuttal to some of the opponent's comments and then we're gonna move on.
Yeah, and the good news is we'll make it quick. We'll just, I just kind of will reiterate and bring forward the comments that were made today, uh, so we won't belabor any of these things. I think everything's been covered. I will offer, as we go through, forward, as you have deliberation, if something comes up and if you have questions, we're certainly here to help on that part, but we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I think we actually have a, a couple of questions, if I, if I may. I'm looking at the maps, uh, that you guys provided. And I see some of the access roads would be on unopened county section lines. And, and how are we proposing to deal with that? Because.
We or they?
Well, us, I guess, because how I understand it, those are actually open, even if they've never been used, they're part of the state highway system, six, uh, sixty-six feet on each side. And talking with other developments, uh, around this area, that wasn't specified. And then when it came time to access that, it was up to the county or the township to pay to open and then maintain those because those are section line roads. You can't form a road district or any other entity like that because they're part of the state highway system. So how do we propose to deal with that issue?
Yeah, Miles, or someone, I'll let someone who, who knows that part better than me cover that.
Yes, my name is Miles Schumacher, I'm an attorney at the Lynn Jackson Firm in Sioux Falls. First of all, the final access roads for the project construction have not been determined yet. If we're talking about access roads to turbines, those are roads that we build on private property and maintain.
They're like this one right here on, I don't know what page it is because there's no page numbers, but this would be on an unopened section line. And unless, and how I understand it, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, that's, would either be the county's responsibility or if it's organized, an, an organized township, is that, is that correct or not?
Turn, turn your microphone on.
No, it'd be their responsibility to open section line, it would be.
Okay. Sure. Okay. Okay. Okay, and could we make sure we put that in, would you recommend we put that in the findings? Because I, I know when I went to Bonhom, that was something that they had to deal with.
You're not on.
Okay.
They, they have no choice. You're saying, could you put it in there? Probably could, but it is, it is the law.
Okay.
Do you have a question, Ryan?
That was, that answered my question, thank you.
I saw you turn your light on.
Yes. Now, um, when you were going over the light situation for the FAA lights on them and how they turn off aircraft and you are putting radar stations around, how many radar stations are there going to be located around? I didn't see them on the maps or anything. So I was just curious about details about that system now.
Yeah, so the, so the process is, with the FAA approvals for the, the, the locations themselves, a separate application is made for the, uh, ADLS system. They'll make a determination of where those have to be and, and how many it will take in order to do it. So in other words, they need coverage for the whole project and every turbine. So the actual final layout of where those would be, which would be in the, you know, in the same project footprint, that's done as part of the coordination with the FAA.
I can maybe just add a little bit to that. So, within that, so when the, the application's made to the FAA, there, there's two or three companies now in the U.S. that provide these systems. And so what will happen is, when they, when they make the application to the FAA, they will show the locations, so they'll study where the radar locations would be, the radar towers would be, that would be part of the application to the FAA. Typically for a project this size, both if we look at the project as a whole in Turner and Yankton County, we're probably looking at two radar stations, one sort of on the north end, one on the south or east-west, it'll all depending on the various flight paths. So it'll be two, at most probably three, and then those towers would again be part of the FAA approval.
Okay, but you don't know the location of those towers?
Not yet, because again, this is as, like all the other different types of applications we've talked about and all the permits we need, in order to then move forward to spend the money to have the companies design the system and everything else, we need certainty that a C U P is actually granted, that you folks want the project or not. So that's something to be shared with you when, when you do the FAA side. And again, it has to be registered with the state as well. So when that study's done, uh, we can certainly share that with you.
So, the, the problem here is, okay, so you're talking about two or three being located around a very large area. So you're talking about radars that are doing sweeps or omnidirectional?
No, they're sweeps, so you gotta, I can put it off the picture if you want, but it, there's, there's sweeps. So that the radar towers are, so again, I'll just give you an example, not endorsing this company, but there is a company called D-Tech, okay? And so what they, that's typically a company that these folks would work with. They, again, their, their professionals come in, look at the project layout, they look at the topography, they look at all of the obstacles in the area. And they'll be the ones first, and then they'll determine the height of the radar tower as well as the locations that are, and then they have to show that radar coverage then to the FAA professionals for approval. Now, if they, you know, again, I'm just saying, going off of experience with the probably twenty or so projects that I've been involved with that now have ADLS. If you look at North Dakota, for example, North Dakota, when they put their legislation in a couple of years ago, it was all new projects, but it was also retroactive for all existing projects, the only state that's done that. So there's forty-some-odd projects up in North Dakota that now, now all have this system in place. The new projects here in South Dakota do. And so it's very well-understood technology, again, it has to be applied for and approved by the FAA.
So how do we have assurances that we have setbacks on these towers as well?
So, I mean, they're, they're just, it's just a tower with a, with a small radar mast on the top.
Yeah, well, a radar is, is EMF. It's stronger EMF, I've worked in radar. That's, that's the type of EMF that can actually do damage and not the type that comes from power lines. So I, I'm just curious about how do we are assured that the non-participating residences aren't affected by these radars?
Yeah, a hundred percent, that is certainly something in my area of expertise and field. So, the, the microwaves, the, the EMF coming off of a radar like that. So for example, I used to be in the Navy, served in the Navy for twelve years, I was navigating officer. I stood right underneath one of the most powerful radars here. They're similar to that, but they're much less intensity than something like that. There are systems in place, there are codes and standards and practices. By the time you get anywhere from, you know, a couple of feet from distance from that radar, you're gonna be with the background of any electromagnetic field levels. There is not going to be a health impact that would be put on private property. And even if you were to stand under the, you could, you could put a tent under one of those and live there if you wanted to. There, we're not talking about the type of radars that maybe you're thinking of where we're talking about like tornado weather radars or something of that magnitude or strength.
Actually, I've worked with military radars.
Okay, well, and that, and so they're not, that's where I'm saying, uh, Commissioner, we're, we are talking about two different things. Um, and certainly they are safe and approved and, and for use and, and will not impact people from any sort of, you know.
But we don't know the locations of them.
Not, not yet, I mean, again, but those will be provided to you. And it may even be that, to be honest with you, it may be that they're not even in Yankton County. They could be in Turner County because you, you've got a third of the project at the south end here, I'm not, maybe they will. We would provide those locations to you, again, it wouldn't be feasible, if we were to apply to the FAA now, what would be the point? We're not sure of the project. After tonight, if you folks were to approve to move forward with reasonable conditions, that's when that process would begin. But there's, there's now, again, all of North Dakota, all forty-some-odd projects, I just can't remember it off the top of my head now, all have this radars, this system in place. There are, you know, hundreds now, projects across the U.S. that have this in place. It is safe, it's proven technology. And more importantly, it's safe for the aircraft, right? We're talking, we're not talking about the flights that are going overhead and heading over to Denver or whatever have you, those are at thirty thousand feet. We're talking about, most pilots are not flying small aircraft at night. But if they were, that's the whole point, is to make sure they're protected and the, the systems are reliable and they, you do need that protection.
Okay.
And again, we're, as you folks, you have any more questions, we're happy to answer this as you go.
Question, there's, there's gonna be a substation built as well as part of this project?
I'm, I'm gonna get the project manager up for that one.
And then, from what I understand, that, that's, that's included in this conditional use permit? And that's gonna be on the, the, yeah, yes, but the road utilizing that will be the county line road, correct? The county line road in Yankton? And then I just think that, you know, we need to realize additional traffic and those types of things. You know, like what kind of material will be, will be coming into the substation?
Thanks for the question, I have our project engineer, engineer.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to hear, hear from him. You know, we just have an obligation to protect. You know, we just have an obligation to protect our in, infrastructure. We, we just wanna need, need to know what's coming in that road, what's coming out. Are we gonna have a road hall agreement? That road is jointly owned by Yankton and Turner County. And then a portion of it would be Hutchinson too, I believe, so.
Correct.
How, how are we gonna do that?
My name is Perry Oberg, project engineer, and I'm originally from up in North Dakota.
Sure, sure.
The.
Is there a way we could pull that up on the map by chance, so everybody can see that, that map? Just so we're all talking the, the same thing, because I would imagine the route, at least at some point, you guys would be using it, would be Highway eighty-one and then east. And so I guess my concern is.
So the, the station that's in Yankton County is, is, would be the WAPA, the interconnect station?
Okay, yeah.
Our collection, the substation, would be located in Turner County.
Okay, I thought on, I thought in, I thought in one of my maps it was located in Yankton County.
I apologize. Yes, it is actually adjacent to the. It's adjacent to the WAPA station.
Because it was, it was just, just inside Yankton County. And so I guess, you know, Mike and Sir, what kind of, what kind of trucks are we talking about? Is there gonna be heavy parts coming in there and being stored? And, you know, we have an obligation to take care of our infrastructure. And at least a portion of that is, I wanna say, isn't that jointly owned with Hutchinson, who's not a part of it, but then other part of it is Turner County, so. You guys are.
Any trucks that come in have to be permitted.
Okay.
By the highway system.
Okay, but permitted for the state, but we do load limits that the state highway system doesn't do.
And we've talked with the county highway superintendent, any trucks that come in would have to be permitted with the county as well.
Yeah, there would be a hall route agreement. That's what's gonna discuss. It would cover where the trucks would go, the limits on the hall route.
Okay. But that, yeah, during construction, but then during operation, I imagine we'll have stuff coming into that substation.
So once the substation is built and completed, the traffic is at a very minimum.
Okay.
There would be weeks probably that nobody would go to the substation.
All right, I just wanna make sure we, we realize that. And that particular road, I know we talked about two ninety-fourth, but that's another county paved road that we just.
Which, which road is that?
That'd be the county line road off of Highway eighty-one east-west.
Two ninety-first.
Yeah, yeah.
Two ninety-fourth, two ninety-one.
And what I'm saying is, you know, yes, Turner County's involved, yes, Yankton is, but a portion of that is Hutchinson who's, I, I.
Do trucks drive down it now?
They do, but if we get a.
Do semi-haul grain there?
If we get a hundred more trucks on it, I mean, if, I mean, we've had many examples of, of our county roads, you know, turning to powder. I mean, two, two ninety-fourth was a, was a road that, you know, ended up having to be ground up. I just wanna make sure we are putting the appropriate safeguards in to protect our infrastructure. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
And again, the hall route agreement is, is where that takes place. And this has been done, like you heard, for, about the amount of projects, and I've worked on probably nearly a hundred of them. That's what, the good news story is the hall route agreement, because what it does, puts all the onus and obligation on the company to show the roads are gonna be used, maintain the roads during the project, and get them back into the shape they're supposed to at the end of the construction. In this case, there's, they, they will end up better. And in this case, there's a specific road that will. Additionally, you know, any roads that they need, most of that traffic after the construction is not heavy truck traffic. If they have some kind of event, then they can work with the county for, for hall route agreements, you know, for any kind of major event that takes place, that's, that's common. So it's, this is something we've done a lot and make sure that the county roads are taken care of.
So you guys are okay with, we don't have a final road hall agreement, but what our highway superintendent decides, that's, you guys are gonna be good with that?
Yeah, that's, the, the, the whole concept of it is that that has to be agreed to with the county. And we realize that's subsequent to this.
Yeah, that was a good point somebody brought up, is those are organized townships up there as well. And South Dakota law doesn't allow them to have an input in the conditional use process. So are they gonna be consulted as well?
They are, they are, which is a unique feature. In many states, they are not. And it's done through the county, and then they, the county works with the townships, and in this case, they are.
I wanna make sure that's part of a condition, is that you have an agreement with the organized townships as well, because we don't wanna burden those guys with, with more.
Sure, sure. There's always, there's always a, you know, an obligation on everyone to be reasonable as part of that.
Yep, yep, but leave it, leave it better than you found it. It's a good philosophy.
Absolutely, that's the good part.
Any other further questions from the commission?
Are, are we just questioning these or is there open discussion now?
It's our open discussion.
Yeah. I guess I run really quickly. When, if we approve tonight, when are you planning to start construction?
We've got the timeline earlier. The thing about this, I mean, this is the first step on things, because until we lock in that we have the permits and they can move forward, so many of the other parts can't start, because we need a finalized array, which requires this process. So I'll, I'll like go kind of get specific, but there's still, there may be.
Best guess.
What's that?
Best guess.
Twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-seven?
Twenty twenty-seven for going into operation, construction operation.
So when do you start hauling things in?
Twenty, that year.
Twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five?
The construction.
May, once the road restrictions are lifted in May of twenty twenty-seven. Is, is the target, and we plan to, we are targeting, tracking, putting the project.
So basically, two years from now?
Yes, end of year, twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, there'd, there'd still be another year process with the PUC prior, so getting through that process and then ramping up for the construction.
Yes.
You had something to say, Don?
I have something to say.
All right.
Uh-oh.
Thanks, Wanda.
Anytime.
This project has created a huge amount of interest in, in the county with the citizens of the county. And, and, uh, I, I think it's, I think I wanna explain briefly how I approach this project. Looking forward, I see population increases very likely in the county area. The talk about AI coming in, taking huge amounts of electricity, may come to Yankton. We may never see an AI operation, but it could. Another issue that I, that I see is we're a rural area. We just don't have the population to vote and control our direction on a lot of things that involve federal government and state government economic policy. And we need to position ourselves as favorably as we can, so we can take advantage of that. Second point, looking at electricity, currently we get it from water. Well, our dams are silting in. We get it from gas and oil. Great source, especially natural gas, but we don't have much here. But it's a political issue that has been drummed around for the last two or three years on, on green energy and natural gas. We don't have much to say about it. If they cut that back, we're just gonna pay for it. And of course, we have solar and we have wind and we have nuclear. And those, all of those other sources of energy go to produce electricity. That's where we get it. And I'm looking forward to not wanting to face your kids or you in a situation where there's a blackout for a period of time. Now, putting up this wind tower system won't guarantee that we won't have a blackout. But it does go a long ways towards giving us more opportunity to create electricity from other sources. And I guess, the third point I wanted to, to make is with our discussions here and over the past five or six months, I, I think everybody has to realize that there's twenty-three thousand people that live in Yankton County. A lot of them are kids, but, you know, there's a lot of adults. And we've, we've, we've heard from a hundred or hundred and fifty of you, both for and against. That, that leaves a lot of people that haven't talked. When I talk in the circles that I get out into, people want us to be looking at economic development and growth. They want us to be facilitating the things that Nancy talked about. So, uh, it made me feel bad when, when the suggestion that in order for us to do our job, we have to approve what fifteen or thirty of you guys want. Because it ain't that way. It's, we have to look at it as the twenty-three thousand people. So, uh, I don't, I don't wanna look at them necessarily. But I think, looking forward, we, we have to be proactive. We have to, we, we'd be irresponsible if we weren't looking for a future where we could create energy in different sources. And this may not work out to be one, but, you know, I think somebody said when REA came around, they didn't think that would work either, so. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
Well, I look at it like this, I'm, I hate setbacks because I think setbacks are just lazy. They're a cheap and easy way for us to, to say, oh, this will make something safe if it's just backfire enough and people can forget about it. But then unfortunately, there's no way, once you put up a wind tower like this, you can't, there's no setback that'll ever erase it from your site or, or anything like that. It'll be there. But I do like to address real problems, and I still think that we should enforce noise on this. Because I think about, right now, tonight, back at my farm down at the lake, which has quite a few residences all around, it's gonna be a nice thirty dB sound level out there right now. You know, and that's one of the reasons I, I moved back to Yankton County, was for that type of peace. And now we're gonna ask them to, these people here that have been living here, to live with forty-five dB, which is much higher.
So you live about the same distance from Highway fifty?
Yeah.
As I do?
Yep.
And I'm wondering what the sound level from that highway is.
If you're right up next to it, and if you're right up next to it, it's usually fifty, fifty-five dB.
He's up on the bluff.
I'm up on the bluff.
But you're on the bluff, and that can change things a lot, because, but you're up on a bluff, so you get, you get a different projection than I get.
Yeah. So.
And that's why, that's why when they made those sound maps, you can see squiggles.
Back is when we live in a society, we all have to give in in some areas.
No, I, yes, I agree. And that's why I think for, I think if we go back to our new ordinance of forty dB, I think that's a good compromise. It's just asking a little bit more. If you look at their list in their sound study, most of the non-participating homes are under forty dB. It's twenty-nine, I counted, twenty-nine homes that they need to work on, out of, I don't know, like how many homes was in there. It was quite a few. And so if we can just do better, and again, we wanna see technologies like wind energy to improve. And when we put in good regulation that just doesn't, tries not to like knock them out of the park, but we just want them to push themselves to do better. And, you know, that's what I think we should be looking at.
And so if I might, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we have evaluated whether or not the use of a forty decimal sound limit would be workable for the project. It looks like it's a handful of homes, but that had, I believe it was closer, somewhere between, I think you counted twenty-nine?
Twenty.
Something like that. That, I mean, the reality of the non-participating homes, I, I think that number seems about right to me from my recollection. Subject to check on that. But those twenty-nine homes, if you tried to, you can't then set backfire. If you couldn't get those twenty-nine homes to forty decimals, you just couldn't. And then you couldn't move the project around in order to satisfy a forty decimal. And when you say good regulations, again, I caution that those good regulations are that, that forty-five decimal. That is what, you know, I, I've traveled this country, as probably most of you have, I've actually been to all fifty states, even though I'm from Canada. There's one thing I tell you, whether you're in North Dakota, South Dakota, or New York, sometimes you guys don't agree on everything, all between New York State and South Dakota. The wind regulation of forty-five decimals is universal almost now across the US, or not fifty decimals.
It's not quite, because I did, I did look up the Department of Energy's compilation of, of the, of these regulations across all counties in the United States.
Right, so.
It's, it's quite varied.
Well, you, you can find lower limits like forty or thirty-five, and you will not find a wind project in those counties. And so simply, yeah, you could pass, you know, your ordinance right now that's at forty decimals, and I think we talked about this before, you're not gonna find another wind company coming in here with the, the set of ordinances you have because you cannot work the project. I'm not saying facetiously, I'm, I'm letting you know that, and again, you're the deliberative body, but if you put in a forty decimal sound limit on this project, if you try to impose that, you quite simply will not have a project. And that's, that's up to you folks, right? But I'm just saying, that is the reality. Just like the one mile setback, if you put it in forty decimals, you will not have a project. There's no better afforded health, safety, or even welfare on the property at forty versus forty-five. And again, and we talked about what the research is, it's not company-paid research. We're talking about Health Canada, we're talking the National Lab, Lawrence Berkeley National Lab here in the US. We're talking about Australian universities, we're talking about government-funded research. Forty-five is that number that works, and then up to fifty. If you go to forty, again, you can, but it will, there will not be a project.
That's what you say.
Well, well, no, but I'm not just saying that's what I say. What I'm saying, we looked at that. I, one of the questions that I asked next chair to do, tell me, can you reach a forty decimal sound limit? I'm telling you, the answer is actually no. In that project area, maybe there might be another part of the county, but for this project, for the thirty-seven turbine locations we're asking for, in that box of the whole area, you could not put, you could put maybe a couple, two, three, four turbines. You cannot build a utility scale project in that area to forty decimals. Is there another part of the county that you might be able to? Maybe, I can tell you, there's nowhere in the county, you can go to one mile setback property lines. There's nowhere in the state you could do that. But for forty decimals, this project will not be built, if that's a condition that's approved. And, and I, I've got next chair's permission to tell you that. If you wanted to see a map, I could show it to you, but it cannot be done.
Well, I think about the fact that I have to live with forty-five, fifty decimals every weekend through the summer. And I got the, my property got all these extra conditions put on it. And for not weird reasons, so I'm like, and, and that being put next to it has already discouraged us from developing our property in the way we originally wanted to. And so your forty-five dB does affect the people who live next to it. Forty-five dB is noticeable, and forty-five dB is a change in quality of life for the people that are living within these towers, okay?
So, so what I, and Commissioner, if I might, there are studies, when I talk about quality of life, and I talk about mental health and all the like, there are studies, again, around the world, including right here in the US, that look at those answers, those questions, before and after. Am I gonna tell you, you're not gonna hear it? No, I've never told this commission that if you had a forty-five decimal at the exterior of your home, on, and it's not gonna always be like that every day, and again, as you said, most houses won't be there, but for those that will, will you notice it if you're out on your deck some days? Will you notice it as you're on your property? Yeah, the answer is yes. The reason we have sound limits, though, is again, you're gonna notice the grain dryer, you're gonna notice the combine. It's, it's gonna feed the field. The boys are in the field tonight all night, from what I understand, because it's gonna rain on Saturday. I mean, those are noises that we hear. Is it thirty decimals at your house sometimes at night? I'm sure it is. And I also know that there's areas that it's up to fifty decimals. It varies, our soundscape varies. The reality is that seventy thousand turbines, the people with the thousand-plus turbines here in South Dakota, it is all in the eye of the beholder, but we don't then, you know, stop. it is all in the eye of the beholder, but we don't then, you know, stop brain bins. We don't stop other things. There is noise scape. We know that the 45 decimals reduces the annoyance to projects. We know that it allows people to have the quality of life and enjoyment of property. And most importantly, sleep. And the reason why is because you've got about a 15 decimal difference between outside and inside of your house with the windows open in the summertime. That's Department of Transportation. That's other, other government agencies that publish those numbers. So that means you're at like 30, 32, 28 inside your house. That's why the sleep studies, again, around the world, we, quality of life, the number 45 works. And I'm not saying, we're not gonna agree, Commissioner. I, I, I get that.
I, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna just put it like this. I cannot vote to let someone else live with something that I wouldn't live with. And I wouldn't live with 45 dB outside my house. It's not pleasant.
Mr. Chair?
Question for you guys on abandoned turbines. I know our zoning ordinance says, you know, abandoned
Which one?
Four point one one dash
The older than new?
The one that we're dealing with now.
Okay.
But even in, on, on page 10, it says the Yankton County Zoning Administrator may require, I mean, what's gonna happen if you guys have a, you know, abandoned turbine? Do you have a, something in place that you're gonna take care of that? I, I would assume you would, but you know, right now, the, the may, you know, I don't, I don't know how, how to feel about that. May require the permit to decommission it? If you have an abandoned one, what are you gonna do with it?
Yeah, then you could, it'd be, first of all, it's abandoned. So if it's abandoned, it'd be decommissioned and taken out. That is exceptionally rare. But occasionally there's a turbine, for whatever reason, they determine it's not needed, you decommission it. And if we don't decommission it, you have a security in place to take care of that. So you're completely protected for that.
Gary, are you, you comfortable with that? Or would you like some different wording on that in case we have an abandoned turbine? Cause right now, you know, just say, may require the permit, you know, is that a condition we wanna put in? And, and it's hard for us to know because we really don't have the final decommissioning plan. What we're gonna do is we're gonna vote yes or no. And if, if we approve it tonight, we really don't have a good idea what that decommissioning plan is to include in these turbines if one gets abandoned.
And real quick, as you think, from a process standpoint,
Sure.
when it goes through the PUC process, that decommissioning process has to be there. So it's even long before it goes and then they, they approve it. Then you have the part within the ordinance. If we have an abandoned turbine and then we're told we have to decommission it, which of course we would, we do that, plus you have the security in place.
I would almost rather have some sort of condition, but do you remember what was that, five or six years ago? We had those old radio towers that the county had to tear down. And I'm, I'm sure somebody promised when they were done with those radio towers, they'd take them down. If it's gonna be done anyway, I don't see an issue with.
You just wanna change the word from may to will?
I, I would just like, or, or just have a guarantee or condition that if we get an abandoned one, you're gonna take it down, which you're gonna do anyway.
Yeah. And it's also, again, we're gonna prove that de, the decommissioning plan is approved before we go into construction. So it can be part of that certainly.
But we won't see it. We're gonna vote yes or no here this evening, right?
You can see it, but again, add in a condition that we, we decommission abandoned turbines, it would certainly be fair. We wanna, you know.
If it's something you're gonna do anyway.
Yes. Yeah. What happens, we have to be careful on the, on the way you define that. Occasionally there's a turbine that has some kind of issue and it takes some, some period of time to get it re-operated because you have to order parts. You have to bring in a crane or something like that. So you wanna have a reasonable amount of time, but if it's abandoned, no problem.
I just, I just don't want the county to have to spend tax dollars to tear down
Absolutely.
a turbine. And that's, that's the position I'm in.
And that's the great thing with a, with a wind project, because we put the security in place, it's gonna be the last thing that the county would have to, because you'll have that in place to do it. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a reason why we do it. It's the reason why the state requires it. It takes that risk off the county completely.
Well, I have three things. First is I've heard a lot of talk from everybody about property rights. Everybody has property rights. The people that want to put up wind turbines on their land, they have property rights. The people who live beyond the setback, they have their property rights. I don't think that we're in a position to tell people, as long as they follow the ordinances that were in place at the time, that they can't do what they wanna do with their property. And based on the fact that the current CUP that is before us tonight was submitted under the old rules and the old regulations and the old ordinances, I don't think that we have any choice but to approve it. It's not necessarily my favorite thing. I did vote for the new ordinance. I believe it was on September 4th, could be off a day. And that is for, as I indicated during that particular meeting, that is for those people who wanna put up turbines going forward. Right now, we have to deal with the people who wanna put up turbines now. People, the company that has invested what they say is $10 million over seven years to get to where we are today. And I would agree to a tiny bit with Mr. Clemish, which is
Get that on record.
Which is unusual, but I think that a condition precedent to the approval of the, this ordinance is that the company agrees to keep the roads in good condition and put them back in the condition that they were when they came, including all township roads. Because it's not just gonna be, you know, some highway or some paved roads. It should be all of the roads that they run down, grind up, because it's not fair to everybody else in the county. And there are some 23,000 people. It's just not the hundred on this side or the hundred on this side. It's everybody's roads. So it would have to be with that condition added to it.
That does apply to both the construction and decommissioning.
Correct.
Yep.
No, I just want them to put it up and then I don't care. No, both, coming and going.
Are we all done? I'd call for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the CUP, provided that the current existing CUP that has been submitted under the old rules, provided that the company agrees to keep the roads in good condition and put them back to the condition that they were in, including any county roads, any township roads, both during the building of this project as well as the decommissioning of this project.
How about building and the ongoing maintenance of it and decommissioning?
That would be fine. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Too, too wordy?
It's a good thing that's just video there. You can go back.
I, I think it's pretty hard to require them to keep all of the roads in precondition.
No, they have to put them back. It doesn't say they have to
Put them back.
Yes, put them back.
When they're done.
You're not gonna mean, you're not gonna look at them because they drive on them to maintain?
Not every five days, no.
I think in the, I think in the road hall agreement, they're gonna maintain the roads that they're using on that particular day or three days or week or whatever, that will be in the road hall agreement. That if they're using, if they're using just 293, 295 and putting a tower up there and they're bringing 15 trucks down that road at the end, by the time they get in there and out of there, they're gonna fix that road or maintain that road while they're doing that.
I'll second Wanda's motion.
I have a, motion by Wanda. I have a second by Don. Any further discussion?
Further discuss, Rob, do you think that, that's an adequate motion for a road hall agreement? And, cause we gotta remember is, is there gonna be contractors and subcontractors and all of this stuff? And somebody goes down a road and maybe a culvert's getting washed out and they got something to deliver, they're taking another road whether or not it's authorized or not. So any road damage that happens has to be taken care of because it's not fair that, you know, we get our roads destroyed and, and, you know, talking where this, where this happened in Cottington County years ago is there were no road maintenance agreements and roads got damaged. And so I think that needs to be done. And, and then, you know, I, I really think this abandoned turbines, I mean, they, they got, they have to be taken care of. You know, we can't, we can't, you know, we, we're told we're gonna get $3 million, but if we get a million dollar road destroyed, is it economic development? I don't, I don't think it is. So we gotta have those conditions on it.
So, so you want more than just the road hall agreement?
I, I think we, we need to have a, a road hall agreement and agreements to fix any damage in the road hall agreement. Because right, and for maintenance too, because if they're coming in and out of the, the substation and I, I know some of these places, they're gonna come in and now they're gonna upgrade the motor and all of those. And those things are very heavy. And what happens if there's additional damage? I think damage, road damage
So, so any of the roads that are in that, whether they're township or county roads, within the footprint of the farm,
If, if damage
Mike will inspect them going in and Mike can run out and inspect them, inspect them every once a week, twice a week, whatever, whatever we need to do.
I don't think we need to inspect them, but if there's damage that's happening due to the, due to that.
How is it, how is anybody gonna know if there's damage if somebody doesn't go in?
Just assume it's these guys. No, I'm just kidding.
So, so I, I'm with, I'm good with Mike dealing with them as far as repairing roads that, that you're tearing up. And I'm sure that you'll work with him. You've already worked with Mike somewhat on, on some roads that, that, that you've pointed out. I, I agree, we need to have the road hall agreement in place.
Yeah, prior to
Prior to construction.
Yes.
And, and we'll get that taken care of. Okay, I, any further discussion? I have a motion by Wanda, second by Don to approve the CUP with the condition that the roads are taken care of during and after and while there's any decommissioning going on. And however, Gary, however, you wanna write that into that road hall agreement?
Rob, do you think that's acceptable? Or do you think we should change some words on that condition?
You're referencing, and maintenance too, you're referencing maintenance also, and that's in there too? I think that'd be fine.
Okay.
Fine in how it's worded.
Okay. Roll call vote?
That's a good
Let's include bridges as well.
All right. Obviously, bridges are gonna be included in the road hall agreement.
Well, let's just put it in there just to make sure.
I still, I still would like to include a condition for 40 dB for non-participating.
I, I have a motion and a second and roll call, and we've already discussed and we're gonna have roll call. Patty, please.
Wanda?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Ryan?
No.
John?
Yes. What's that? Motion carries? Next, can I get a motion to
I'll move to go back into regular session.
A motion by Wanda, second by
Don.
Don, to go back into regular session. Floodplain ordinance adoption, first reading.
Gotta give them a minute to clear the room?
Sure.
I asked Gary to get a map so we can visualize kinda what, what's gonna happen.
Yeah, it's probably what she wanted. Well, it's not exactly. I wrote it up after. Yeah. I was just kidding, anyway, Wanda. That's all right.
Have a safe trip.
Wouldn't be the first time I've taken some harass.
Have a safe trip.
Thanks, Go Can.
All right. First reading, recommendation to adopt Yankton County Floodplain Damage Prevention Ordinance and proposed maps, which will replace the Yankton County Ordinance Number 7, 2010 dash one per ordinance, 24 ZN 08. As you all know, this has been, I don't know the exact date, cause it was before I was here, but at least a six-year-plus project that now we're at the end of. And FEMA expects us to adopt our ordinances and maps. And Dan asked me to bring in a couple of maps. We know there's been, and a lot of our citizens probably know that a lot of our floodplain changed to floodway, especially on the east side of the county. And just to give you an idea, everything over here by, all this that was in blue here, now that was Zone A at that time, now is all floodway. And so you can see there's been a significant change in the east, east side of the county. And that's, that's probably the most, the biggest area that, that was affected in our county. A lot of the areas, they can say, but, but any development of things, any, any development in things on that east side now, before they could do any kind of development, they'd have to do, go through an engineering process. No RISE certification, which costs our citizens some money and things. And we do have some people that went through the process years ago, got their letter of map amendments, and now they're being put back in. And so there, there's like a dozen of those, I think, right now. And, and so, so there's some changes that have been made. The focus seems to be more now on flood prevention versus calling it a flood zone map per se. So, so that's, that's, that's what's going on. But, but we're required to have this all adopted before the effective date of February 14, 2025. So we're going through the process a little early, cause they don't even allow it to be five days late of that date. So maps are all printed. We've received them all. And so that's where we're at.
I just have a question for the, our viewing public. Yankton County Commission didn't have anything to do with this new redistricting plan, correct?
Correct.
And we couldn't have stopped it if we'd wanted.
No. And, and you know, those meetings, like I said, started years ago. Unfortunately, a lot of public didn't get involved at that time from what they've said. And so it's a surprise to people somewhat now. But I think we've talked to quite a few people now in those areas that now the word's spreading pretty fast. And if anybody wants a, a copy of the link, I have some sheets there that show the current link that shows the, the pending flood maps and what, what's going on there. So.
The, the reality as I see it, I mean, this is, we wanna talk about overreach of the federal government. This is FEMA and the government coming in and making Yankton County adopt this. And oh, and by the way, now all of you guys have to pay additional flood insurance, which is gonna be something. And you wanna build a garage or do anything to your property, you gotta spend a heck of a lot more money. And we wanna talk about something that hurts economic growth and development? And we wanna talk about something that hurts economic growth and development? The east side of our county is pretty much gonna be undevelopable now with that.
Well, but isn't it true that FEMA are the same people that told the people down in North Sioux or McCook Lake that they no longer were in a floodplain and they didn't have to have flood insurance? And how'd that work for them?
Why, and there's been so many disasters out there is, is I, I really, I don't think this is a flood map as much as is, is an insurance map. Because they wanna include a, a lot of properties that will probably never flood to pay for the few properties that do. And Gary and I went to some of these public meetings at, uh, the fire station and if the county wanted to contest, we could hire an attorney for hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, which I believe the city did in some instances. Um, and they, they absolutely would, uh, would not listen to common sense. They, they have the James River floodplain going all, all the way over to Pass Gayville, which is a different watershed, that's the Vermillion watershed.
Well, now, now you understand insurance companies.
I, no, I don't.
Premiums, premiums, premiums.
I, I guess I, I think this is, well, you don't know what I wanna think this is, but.
And the city of Yankton's got the same deadline, so they'll be going through the same process we are right now. But this has happened. Yeah, this has happened with counties throughout the state. We're not the first one to get to this point. There's been a few others before us and there'll be a few more after us.
We can't make a motion today.
This is first reading.
I would like at least for us to put something in the newspaper or let people know, because what, what's gonna happen is the day after this goes into effect, somebody's gonna wanna build a garage or something like that. And then we're gonna say, you can't darn Yankton County, becau-, I mean, our hands are tied, like Don said, like Gary said. We, and, and I guess what happens is if we don't adopt this, then FEMA suspends all flood insurance and, and federal grants and everything. I mean, it's, you wanna talk about heavy-handed government, this is what it is.
Let's move on.
We should allow public comment though, since it is a.
Well, public comment, they can all come up right now.
Public comment is open.
I'll put in something.
Okay.
Good.
On FEMA and floods?
On, on the floods.
Okay.
Uh, Megan Box, back in twenty nineteen, my property was flooded. I was not in the floodplain, so I could not get flood insurance. So therefore I could not, the insurance would not cover any damage done to my property. I had to completely rebuild my house, cause I had three feet of water in my, on my main floor. Uh, FEMA did give me some money to cover some of it, but it did not cover rebuilding a whole house. Um, but what you're saying, I can totally agree with that too, that yes, it would make, uh, building a little bit difficult, but in the same sense, what is there can be preserved and paid for. So, I guess I don't understand everything, but I do understand that. So if people can be made able to acquire flood insurance, that may help out as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed.
Kleinschmidt rezoned, that's you, Gary.
Do what?
We're gonna do what? Kleinschmidt's next. No, I got, I got Kleinschmidt rezone, then I got the petition to vacate.
I have road broom first, Mike?
Yeah, that's, that's what I have on mine.
I don't have it at all on mine. But hello.
Hi.
Do you want the broom now? What happened last month, last month you didn't want one?
Well, we, uh.
Got a better quote.
Yep, we, uh.
We saving money now?
We are.
Making money.
Well, we had two bids.
Who belongs to the?
John Deere.
The one from Transource and then one from REO. The one from Transource, we, we had there and we demoed it. We didn't have one there from REO, so.
See if we can demo it for like a year.
We ended up demoing it and, well.
They both knew?
Right.
Which one you wanna go with?
The REO one, which came in lower.
Is it one twenty twenty-five and one twenty twenty-three?
Motion to approve the REO bid.
Which is the twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve the.
Well, that, no, let's, the REO one says it's twenty twenty-three.
No, that's the Transource one.
Okay. That's not what it says at the bottom.
And you want the REO bid?
Okay.
For the road broom.
Seventy-seven thousand dollars.
I'll second the twenty twenty-five broom.
Okay.
Don't care who did it.
Just tell the, tell the audience what, why it's important to have this.
The broom itself or?
Yes. Just to clean the, clean the roads off for, for paving and?
For paving, for chip seal, for striping, for, uh, the bike path.
Yep. Sounds good.
We got a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve the bid for the REO broom.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five broom, any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Now can we move on to the Kleinschmidt?
Okay, so now we have an applicant first reading that's requesting to rezone a parcel in rural transitional district to moderate-density rural residential district R two per Article eighteen, section eighteen oh nine and Article twenty, section twenty oh three. Said property is legally described as lot one of List acreage in the east half of the southwest quarter of section four, lying south of the public highway in the east half of the northwest quarter of section nine, all in township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. Uh, we touched on this at one of the last meetings, that it's a twenty-acre parcel that, uh, the applicant's looking to put five, four-acre parcels into. And so it fits the area, it, it ties in with the three fourteen area. And, and so, uh, that's what, that's what this is for.
That property's on the south side of three fourteen?
South side, correct.
Like, it'll be a good project.
I can show you.
And it's not in the floodplain.
No, it's not. No, we know where it is.
For once, first reading, so.
Has for public comment.
Open that up for public comment on the first reading on this. Hearing seeing none, public comment is closed. Petition for a vacate.
Very, very patient.
Should've got your paperwork in earlier, huh?
We did a month ago.
Yeah.
Should've brought snacks.
I'm Cannon, this is my wife Carol Gunther. We live on thirty-one, one, five, one, four hundred and thirty-fourth Avenue. Uh, that's just a little description of what we're thinking about. To vacate this parcel of land, it's a narrow strip.
Well, they were supposed to get a packet.
Do, do you own, do you own property on both sides of that then?
Yes, well, on one side. To the north of this parcel that's in, in question here, we own English Heights, block, lot one, block one.
Do you, do you own this property right here too, or just this one?
Yes, we just bought that.
You, you own both of those?
Yes, now we do.
So you got three, three. Okay, okay.
So there's a little pie shape in there and Tom Week, the surveyor, wants us to get rid of it.
To make it all one parcel.
Does that, does that section line go through just that property or?
That's it.
That's it?
And the one that borders it belongs to our daughter.
Where, where are you from, where they put, just put up the new shelves?
Oh, we're across the road. We're to the west.
The third halls, on the west side.
Okay.
Rob, do you see any issue, any issue with this?
And did we pu-, did we publish this?
No, they have to prove it.
They just have to prove the petition and then we'll have a hearing. Then we'll have a hearing like in a month, cause we have to publish twice and we wait out that four, ten days.
You don't see any issue with it?
No, not any issue to set the hearing for you to determine what to do. The petition looks fine.
Motion to approve the petition.
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Ryan, to approve the, uh, vacate on this piece of, this little strip of land. Further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
We'll be seeing you again.
Motion carries.
So we need to come back in a month or?
And then you should tell them to put yourself at the head of the, head of the.
I'll let you know.
Patty will let you know when.
So you're not at the end.
Cause we have to, we have to publish twice and have a hearing. Sorry. Thank you.
I would move to approve the October fifteen meeting minutes.
Second.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, to approve the October fifteen meeting minutes. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
I would move to approve the part one of the claims.
Second.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, to approve the claims, part one claims. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
I move to approve the second part of the claims.
Second.
Got a motion by Ryan, second by Dan, to approve the second part of the claims. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I abstain.
Motion carries. Revised job description for the building supervisor.
I, go ahead.
I have payroll next.
Hmm, I don't have payroll on my list.
We don't have payroll on ours.
I moved to, I moved to approve payroll.
Second.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve payroll. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, so we all get paid.
Patty in the.
Liquor license renewals.
Move approval of the liquor license renewals.
Second.
I think they should show up once in a while.
I got a, I got a motion by Dan, second by Ryan, to approve liquor license.
I don't even have that on my thing.
All in favor, aye?
Aye. You gotta go, go to the online agenda.
It's not on my online agenda. Next thing on my online agenda is the pooled cash. Part one of claims, part two of claims.
We had revised job description.
That's somewhere in here.
Gary, did you want me to take this one?
I'm not sure why, I'm not sure.
Well, hey, come up and introduce yourself. And keep it under five minutes.
Under five hours?
Yeah, under, yeah.
Under, under three, under three minutes.
One, one-minute version or?
Hey, you're the guys that hired me, so, um, Scott Borman, uh, done nine days now as the building and ground superintendent for the county of Yankton. Um, just getting my feet wet, figuring out where everything is. I'm gonna be harassing the county sheriff about not having access to that building yet, but that's an ongoing issue. But, um, I'm really excited about it and I think there's some good things that will be coming down the pike, uh, and everything. If you guys are wondering, one issue that was really front and center for me when I took over was the Operation Green Light display on the west side of the building. We went to put it up and one of the rivets ripped out. So it's, that banner is being repaired at this moment. I'll check on it again tomorrow, so hopefully we'll get it up soon, so.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll be a thorn in your side, you're, you're welcome.
Don't, don't run off, because we have a.
Well, we're looking at redoing the, the ground supervisor, really not much change, but, uh, when we, uh, hired, hired Scott, uh, it's a lot of new things in there. Gary, uh, graciously, you know, offered to kinda help facilitate that with budgeting and the, and this thing. So I think the major change is have him report, uh, to, to Gary. Uh, I think that makes sense, uh, to me, uh, because there's a lot of individual tasks to help him coordinate that. So I guess that's something that I would, I would like to see happen, but we gotta vote on it as a commission, so.
Well, I think they should, you should check with each other.
Your phone, your thing's not on.
For, for just the, just for this one, I, I guess, yeah.
What were you saying?
I think that, um, Scott should check with each of us in this building to see what, if they need anything or if they want.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think he does that.
They have to talk to him.
And extra things.
Yeah, yeah, I guess this would be more for the evaluation, doing budgeting and, and things, things of that nature. I know while Jeff was gone, I was getting a lot of calls of, you know, do I, there's a pump, do I place your pump? Yes, replace, you know, it's, uh, I guess I don't have time to be in here four times a week to do this. I really think it make, I really think this makes sense to, to go this route, so.
So really quickly, I was reading through these, um, minimum qualification, qualifications, computer savvy. Do we have a better word for savvy?
This was, this was the, the description that we had had prior to that, so.
I know enough about computers to be very, very dangerous, Ryan, so.
There you go.
Yeah.
But as, as soon as one is, um, done, made up or done, we need a copy to put it in our file.
Yep.
So do you wanna call it computer literate?
Yes, I think that's a better one.
That's fine, we'll make that change.
Anything else?
No, I, motion to approve the updated job description.
Second.
A motion by Dan, second by Ryan, to approve the updated job description for the building supervisor. Oh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
And I'd like to say thank you too for Gary, for taking on more responsibility for the same page. Do appreciate that.
And welcome aboard, Scotty, welcome Yankton County.
Now in my packet, I have auditor's monthly statement, so.
Wanda, I'm sorry, I didn't update your.
No, I mean, all I wanna know is do, do we wanna approve that?
The what?
Do you want me to move to approve that?
Didn't she already guys do that?
Yes.
What's?
Pooled cash. No, we approved claims, we didn't.
Oh, no, they didn't.
We didn't approve the pooled cash, you want me to skip that, I'm okay with that.
No, go ahead.
No, it has to be a paper.
Go ahead.
Move approval.
Already did.
Aye.
Aye.
Wanda and who then?
Motion by, motion by Wanda, second by Dan. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Sorry, I'll look at it better next time.
Well, you, Patty, you had a lot going on this week. And you did a great job.
The last two weeks have been.
You, you prioritize the election, which you should have done, we can survive and, and thank you for what you did.
The last month has been difficult.
Was it a record turnout, Patty, or?
Yeah, it was like seventy-five percent.
Really, okay, again, uh, thank you to you and your staff and all your assistants, please tell them thank you. It's good not to make national news when it comes to stuff like that. Yes, yes.
Yeah, I can, I, my staff was very, they were the best. They did an excellent job.
Time for closing or public comments?
No, no, Mr. Clemish added a contract for lawn care.
That's an executive session.
Oh, okay.
Okay, take the agenda away from Wanda's, Ryan, take that away from.
I have to write it down, cause it wasn't on there.
Put your glasses on, Wanda.
Time for public comments. Nobody's jumping up, public comments are closed, commission updates.
Uh, this, December twelfth, uh, eight county meeting in Minnehaha County. We're inviting all the legislators to come up there. You guys are all invited, uh, haven't got the final invite, but, uh, when it comes out, Patty will send.
I'll mail that to you and then I'll, if not, you get, who will be going?
Yep.
And what date is it?
December twelfth.
December twelfth.
Yep. Yep. Uh, second thing, I guess I have, uh, Veterans Days coming up. Just take a moment and, well, I'd like to thank Don for his service uh, in our country and Rob, Rob's dad and all the veterans out there and, uh, just, and yeah, Scott too. Uh, does the Marines count? I don't know if they do.
Much so.
Okay, um.
Really?
No, I think they go right, do they, they're right after, well, and Mike too, he's an Air Force guy. What is it?
You guys do remember what Army stands for, right?
Army, Air Force, Navy, Coast Guard, Marines, right? Is that?
No.
Space Force Marines, I got. No, but, uh, on, on the eleventh, just, uh, take a moment and just thank those who made the, um, who served and, uh, that's one of the reasons our country is free, so that's all I got.
Don, you got any for us?
Nope.
Wanda, you got any for us?
Nope.
Ryan, you got any for us?
Well, I, I mean, I did stop by on election night just to see how things are going. Yeah, they were very hard at it. Uh, it's a lot of work, uh, getting those elections run. I was pretty impressed, so. Um, and then other than that, uh, Gary, uh, I really wanted to try to run Tuesdays, uh, hunting and zoning on teams, so we will work on that, so.
Sounds good. Just what time you want me here.
Yeah. Hopefully no, no different than usual, so.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, we would've done it tonight, but tonight was a kind of a hot meeting. We didn't want to rock any boats.
Sounds good.
I'd move to go into executive session for poor relief and contract issues.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to go into executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Somebody gotta tell those police guys they can go.
I think they took off. I heard, Wanda, I heard that Z crack from here. You all right?
Oh, and I won't be there again Saturday.
You better look at your property course. Get out the checkbook because you're gonna be, you're gonna be owing VMS money. The example, the example that lady gave is like, well, my, she lived in Denver. She's like, my neighbor's house got rained and then the culvert plugged up and flooded my house. And I said, that's not flood insurance anyway, yes.
They get all, all the property along the Missouri and Mississippi rivers that we've been paying for.
Yeah, that's, that's why they're doing that. They're, uh, they're, uh, somebody's gotta pay for it, and that's.
Yeah, we're closed on Monday.
Okay, thanks.
That's a bad bow.
Hate the.
Not a helpful on that for her. Not for art.
Only thing you got there is Mission Hill.
And it really doesn't show. Just make it all blue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, time for putting some stuff away. Michael's so. Take a load off in my office upstairs. I saw Mike was hiding upstairs in the hallway earlier in the evening and, and I saw him come from, from.
That's okay.
These are good.
We don't really put that much, so people can get by here.
Yeah. Yeah, then I saw him come out of your office the back way and I'm going, oh, hiding in there, huh?
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, he, he, he let me borrow some of his equipment today, so.
That was nice of him.
Oh, well, yeah, and, well, he, he's nice, so. And then, of course, the thing that we're trying to get rid of, he facilitated that even because concrete lined pilot cabinets. It's like, yeah, throw it next to that pile, we'll crush, we'll beat the snore out of it with our heavy equipment and separate the concrete from the metal. Like, oh, that's much easier.
Yep.
What's the Wi-Fi password in here, do you know? Huh? Do you know what the Wi-Fi password is in here? No, I don't get, don't know that yet. Of course, my office here doesn't have any windows. So I decided, hey, I have photographs that have taken and have been printed off. Let me start. I'll put my own windows in. So you have to do very many nights in or just for meetings? Well, the fact that they're talking about filling this, my role. Oh, so you're, you're not gonna be here for meetings in the west? Oh, that's cool. Okay, that's good. Not that I'm aware of. Maybe if something like this pertaining to me, they're dealing with something in there that would pertain to me, but if they need my comments, they can, they can say, hey, come in here. Oh, that's cool. But, yeah, the best thing about Wednesday was coming in here and putting this room back to normal for the first time in months, you know? You know? And putting a lot of Patty's election stuff back in storage. Didn't realize all those big old envelopes that those early and absentee ballots go into. Mm-hmm. They get saved for a while, too. Do they? Yeah. You'll appreciate this. Nice, I like that. Went out hunting a few weeks ago. How's that for a sunset? Nice. Yeah. Do worse. Hey, my camera got more of a workout than my rifle. I'm quite happy with that. Well, we have buck only tags and all the bucks that we saw were either, oh, about a half a mile away in high wind or on the wrong side of a fence. Nice. But hey, ever see a boundary marker? Oh, nice. Right next to where we were hunting, South Dakota, North Dakota sides. That's awesome. We were way up in the boonies, northwest corner of the state. Northwest corner, you said? Northwest, yeah, Hardy County. That's cool. Yeah. Yeah, pretty early on, somebody came in with a whole bunch of mud and they were putting some mud, the whole pile of it out here and Dan was all worried when he came out pulling the brakes. They're standing there. I'm gonna do money clear out. So what else is new with you? All I know how long you had access to the Sonic Temple. What happened? Well, the Skyshark decided to come to St. John's Lodge and say, we're almost doubling your rent. Really? And we go, you know, we're already giving you one hundred percent of our dues income. You're gonna have to give us some time to figure out how to do this without going bankrupt. And they want it to go into effect a month before. We're like, you just came to us idiots. And so we decided, okay. We don't own this building. We're just tenants here. You treat us like shit. When they put a new HVAC in there, the room we use lost air conditioning. Really? Yeah. They totally did away with that. So we decided, well, they got all up, they, okay. St. John's ended up moving back, but we were. All I know is the ponytail girl is the one that was whining about. I'm just seeing how you plod. You packed a heck of a night attending. Oh, I know, I know. It's been a good time. You got, you should break out and song. I should. Hey, do you remember that patriotic rally that we did, you did at that church show last a few years ago? That was really cool. Guys should do something like that again.
I, I move that we go back into regular section, session.
Motion by Wanda, second by Dan.
Wanda, Dan.
Wanda, Dan. Regular session.
I moved to approve county welfare MI twenty-four oh four oh one in the amount of five hundred dollars for a mental health hold and county welfare burial twenty-four oh four oh three in the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars for a burial, for a total of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Don. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Second.
Motion by Don, second by Dan, adjourned. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? I gotta sign these yet, too?
There's only one thing.
I like these pens.
Well.
You don't want that?
Good thing you guys approved Mike's new broom because I used to have to use a broom out there. It all sounded, one guy came, one guy did that.
I sign right here?
No, well, he's not even from Yankton. He's from Turner County. From Turner County.